I want to really thank everyone for coming and welcome you to the public hearing for the budgets of the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen, Capital. This is an official meeting of the Board of Finance, and we start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'll join me, please.
(inaudible)
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 A lot of wires here. All right. So, introduce myself. I'm Rob Palmeroy, Chairman of the Board of Finance, and we have with us our board members, Linda Schofield, Derek Peterson, and Lisa Hevner. Maura Wertheimer will be here shortly. Unfortunately Derek couldn't be here tonight, but we'll keep him. Derek can, I'm sorry. Kevin Brel can't be here tonight. Derek is here, completely.
Get credit, I credit this dude.
The business, as I said, the business of the meeting tonight is to present the Board of Education operating in capital budgets, which we'll have Tara Willerup and Burke Leclerc help do in just a moment. First, I'm going to give you a budget process overview, and then after the Board of Ed, we'll have the Board of Selectmen operating capital budgets, which will be presented by Eric Wellman and Sean Ascom. At that point, we will open the floor to a public hearing. We welcome everyone to contribute. We would appreciate you keeping your comments to three minutes. We should have a sign-up sheet somehow, so if you would interested in speaking, you can come speak with Maria or Amy, and we'll get your name down and give you an opportunity to address. We'll do that after we've heard from both of the boards. And then afterwards, as I said, this is an official meeting of the Board of Finance. We will conduct Board of Finance business after the close of the public hearing. Depending on how we feel about what we've heard and where we are in the process, we will either formally close this public hearing tonight and move these to referendum, or we'll have questions and continue that. And so it's important, if you're truly interested in what happens from here, that you stick around and see what happens after this meeting. So, this, going over our process, we are a town that's run by three citizen boards: the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education, and the Board of Finance. And with our charter change, we are now benefiting from professional management in the form of a town manager and professional staff that is now in its second official budget presentation, but the first one was, I think, three weeks into the job. So, this is first full year. And so it has changed the process a little bit, but I think it's a, we're moving up the learning curve of how we used to do things with how we're doing things now, and we're getting better at it with every meeting. Our job... That wasn't me. Was that me?
No.
All right? All right, sorry. Everybody okay? So, our job as boards is to, each of us has a different role that we play. The Board of Selectmen's job is to provide services and make sure that the citizens of the town and the taxpayers are given the services that the town should provide, and those include police, libraries, social services, parks and rec, plowing the roads, maintaining the walkways, all of those things. Board of Ed, of course, is charged with the education of our children and give the best possible education that they can, but all within the confines of prudent expenditures. And our job as the Board of Finance is to provide fiscal oversight for all of the operations of the town and focus on keeping the budgets where they should be so that we can all both enjoy the services of the town and the education of the Support of Ed, but afford to live here. And so that's our job as oversight. But we do that with the stakeholders that are very important: the citizens, as I mentioned, the students and teachers, and the taxpayers. So, one of our responsibilities is conducting public hearings on proposed budgets. That's what we're doing tonight. We will approve the town and Board of Ed operating budgets and capital budgets after we're comfortable with input from those of you here tonight in the town, as well as from the boards themselves. And then we'll recommend them, refer them to the referendum where the citizens can, and taxpayers can vote on them. Once we have the outcome of that referendum, we will set the mil rate, which will pay the expenses that are incurred by the budgets. Then during the year, we also are tasked with approving supplemental and emergency appropriations, and if necessary, transferring from one fund to another if necessary to keep those funds solvent. And then we also look at, have an oversight responsibility for the town pension trusts and other post-employment benefit that go to our employees. If we look at the key Board of Finance criteria for 2020, we went over a lot of these at the tri-board meeting we had back in December, early December, but it's always the same: ensure long-term fiscal discipline, maintain our debt service and capital under 7% of expenditures, which is the policy of the town, set an appropriate mil rate, be sure that we're always keeping an eye on our AAA bond rating because that's what sets the interest rate for the borrowings that we have, and then we manage our reserves to minimize surprises and smooth taxes. And we all do that collaboratively among the boards so that it's, we have all of those stakeholders in mind. We continue to be proud of our AAA rating from S&amp;P. We've had very stable financial operations. We get high marks from the financial community for our ability to balance our budget on an annual basis, maintain fund balances that are more than adequate, and we're particularly good at the funding of our pension and OPEB liabilities, especially compared to both other towns and the state. We've, were able to maintain flat taxes for a number of years. Many of the people in the room will remember two years ago when we were faced with Governor Malloy's radically draconian proposals for teacher pensions and the like that upset the budgeting process, and there was a great deal of uncertainty that year. I think we took very prudent action and set aside a fairly substantial reserve more aggressively than some towns. We were able, unfortunately, not to have to use that reserve and able then to moderate the taxes in the subsequent year. We do do a revaluation every five years, and when that happens, the mil rate most often resets based on the reevaluation of the entire grand list, so that masks sort of the effective tax rate depending on whether your home was revalued up or down, but we ended last year with a 3642 mil rate. And also very proud of the financial management that we have, and we've received Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for 19 years. So balancing the budget is, you know, seems sort of simple, not quite as simple doing it as it is in thinking about it, but you want to take all the expenditures you have and then offset them by the revenues that you have. The Teachers Retirement System Assessment, this will be a topic for this evening. This was a proposal by Governor, in Governor Lamont's budget, to start having the towns pay part of the teachers' retirement. The original indication was about $300,000 for the town of Simsbury for the 1920 budget year. This particular proposal, as I understand it, was turned down in committee just last week, so we have the budgets that have been presented to you have that $300,000 in it, and we will have discussion about that perhaps tonight. We should continue to include that. The revenues that we balance the budget with are the taxes on property, automobiles, the grants we get from both state and federal agencies, and then the fees we charge for services in town. So, the other big component of this is those items that we charge the tax mil rate against, which are the grand list. The movement in the grand list this year is 1.86 percent, it's 1.42 percent for the 2021. These are projected from, help me here, Amy, so the total grand list is 1920, that's the projected grand list, 2.4, which is up 0.92 percent from the grand list that we are using for the current fiscal year. And then it's expected to continue to rise during the two subsequent years. So when we go about setting the mil rate, we look at what the assessed property values are times the mil rate, and that determines the total property taxes needed. Or to turn that formula around, in order to figure out what we need the mil rate to be, we take the total property taxes that we need and we divide it by the assessed property values. And so that will generate the revenue to pay the expenses. One of the other inputs is the state budget impact, and again, this was prepared last week, but the, we are expecting an increase to the education cost sharing in this year's budget that's been published, but we would, that would be offset by the addition of the teachers' retirement contribution if it ultimately goes through, and as I said, that was, failed to pass the committee last week. So, looking at the guidance that we gave at the tri-board meeting, we gave the Board of Selectmen a mandate of 2% increase maximum, I'm sorry, 2% for the Board of Ed and 2.72 for the increased maximum for the Board of Selectmen. At the, comparing that to the fiscal year 2019 adopted budgets, which totaled 96 and a half million, the, each of the boards came back after looking, and again, that mean, those meetings were in early December, the Board of Selectmen came back with a change of 8.23 percent, and debt service was up 14.8 percent, and the Board of Ed was up 2.2 percent. When you take this all and look at it in total, the increase is 4.26 percent for the requested budgets that were presented for this meeting tonight. All right? So, looking at the budget drivers and changes, and you'll hear about this as you listen to each of the presentations, debt service and capital is a big topic, it always is, but how we, what we need to buy, how we buy it, how long it lasts, and whether we borrow for it are the fundamental elements of coming up with a good capital budget. Health insurance, always a big line item, and in this year, we've, under new management, we've taken, we've hired a new consultant for insurance. We've looked at our actual experience because we do self-insure both for the town and the school, and have adjusted upwards the level of premiums that we need to pay as both the town, and that does impact the employees' contributions. Always at the base of our budget is the contractual salary increases for union employees, and those are included as a major driver. Stormwater requirements, this was an unfunded state mandate, continue to get those. And then one of the things you'll see tonight is that there were some budget items that we had historically under-budgeted, at least we have had negative variances to the budget in those categories, and this is an attempt to try to fix the budgeting so that the budget and the actual match by the end of the year. A couple of things that you'll see, and again, a lot of this is in the sausage making, but there is an effort to really make the budgeting process much more transparent, which would be, in past years, we have done some expenses that were, had revenue offsets, we would show them as expense net of the revenue offset. So this budget has some built-in increases that include the gross amount of the expense and the gross revenue. The net effect is the same, but it does have the effect of looking, if you're just comparing expenses from one year to the next, the gross expense has gone up. And then there are, there are some other items that needed to be budgeted for the true cost, and the past day had not been correctly budgeted. So, where we are today is with this requested budget of 100.6 billion is, we're going to, as a Board of Finance, we're going to be looking at the revenues that we know, the state, our projected state aid and non-tax revenue, and then we're going to be looking at what we need to set the mil rate at based on the forecasted grand list. Based on these budgets, as sent to you for review and to be discussed tonight, the net would be forecasted to be a mil rate of 37.36. This represents a 2.59 percent increase over last year's mil rate, or 0.94 mils, and on a median home price in town, that would be $202 per house. Last topic is our famous capital chart, which is our attempt to show how the need to fund capital items, both bonded or with cash, compared to the projected budgets going forward, or expense budgets. In past years, we've had the ability to use cash for capital because the actual bonded debt, which are the solid colors, not the hashed colors, has been less than the target line, and we have done that in the past. This is a result primarily of the bonds for the high school having been paid off a couple of years ago. But we are looking at a pretty steep mountain with projects that are both in the works and planned, including the Henry James Project, that will make it difficult to stay under that line out in, you know, five or six years for, again, planned capital projects. So as we talk about the capital, or you, as you hear about the capital budgets of the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen, pay attention to some of those. So what I'd ask you tonight is to listen to the presentation of the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen and the capital budgets, ask your questions, please express your views, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. We'll hold responses or answers to questions and comments until after the end, and then the Board of Finance, as I said, will meet to discuss the budgets and their current state and the comments that we hear tonight. So with that, I would ask, who's up first? Tara, to come up, Burke to present the Board of Ed's budget.
Yeah, don't.
Left, right? Left, right?
Thanks, Burke. There's a lot of stuff back here. I'm Tara Willerup. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Ed of Simsbury, and I am presenting the budget. I'd like to thank Sue Selena, Todd Burke, and Jeff Tyndall, who's the board members who are here tonight, I think that's all I see, but, and the staff who have been so great at putting this together and who are here tonight as well. So, you know, our process initiated in November with the Board of Finance providing expenditure guideline of 2% increase. Our budget development took into account many factors, and it supports several core values of the school system by maintaining our programs and providing enhancements. We're looking at a budget of $70,670,269, which is an increase of $1,527,717, a 2.2 percent increase. We continue to monitor our enrollment, and you can see that our decline in our high school enrollment is offset by an increase at the middle school and the elementary level. We are projected to see a slight decline of 17 students overall. This slide provides background information on our per pupil expenditure. Our ranking within the state and our Derg are stable compared to last year, and if you notice listed on the bottom of this slide are examples of comparable communities and budget history. Our responsibility includes providing varied educational opportunities and programs that will help all students to be prepared for the global world. Here are just a few examples: theater, engineering, robotics, culinary, and athletics. In presenting tonight, we want to provide information on the three main drivers in the development process: contractual obligations, program improvements, and employee insurances. Our cost-saving measures and operational efficiencies are always important to us, and we captured enrollment-related reductions and zero-based budget accounts to show that. Fixed contract costs represent an increase of $1.4 million over last year's budget, an increase of 2.11 percent. The teacher contracts represents an increase of roughly $1 million. There are resources included to address needs in world language at the elementary level, a social worker, and a district-wide director of school safety and security. We were able to meet these needs through reductions in staffing due to decline in enrollment. Our overall staffing total is down from last year. Employee insurance. This is one of our biggest, it's our second cost driver in our budget, and we originally anticipated a 9% increase, but the revised premium increase of, from the Board of Ed and the Town Benefits Consultant was 12%. And we, in using the non-lapsing funds by recommendation of the Board of Finance, we can hit a net increase of $465,611, which is a big driver in our budget. This is our summary of changes. We originally presented a 2.5% budget in February, and then the initial impact of the health insurance brought that up to a 2.8% increase. We have found, at the advice of the Board of Finance, we went back and we found reductions in additional certified teacher retirements, kindergarten classroom reduction, not use of the non-lapsing account for healthcare insurance, equipment reduction, and district membership reductions to bring us down to a 2.2% budget total. The non-public school budget represents the town's responsibility to town private schools, primarily nursing and transportation. So, in summary, we are, we can go to our next slide, sorry. Is there no more slides? That's it. So I was just going to say, you guys can't see, but I have it right here, I'd be happy to show it all to you. Basically, our major drivers were our contracts, obligations, program improvements, employee insurance, and contracted services, utilities, building maintenances, technology, and our reductions are in certified staff, non-certified staff, and the use of the non-lapsing account to bring us to a 2.2% budget, which is $70,670,269.
Okay, thank you. Sean, introduce yourself. Sean and Eric.
Oh, Burke, were you still? Oh, you're still.
Following the order.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. I'm sorry.
Have you had enough of us?
(laughter)
Yours is in the upper right, Burke.
Oops, I did the wrong one.
You could do ours if you wanted.
Thought it's a Board of Ed. I even have my glasses on, but, all right.
It's in the upper right.
This one here?
That one.
This one. Very good.
Good evening. I'm Burke Leclerc, Business Manager of Simsbury Elementary Schools, and I'm going to talk about our three capital projects that are part of the town's six-year CIP. The first-year projects are the ones that the, that would be included in this budget process, and so we're focusing on three of them. The three that are summarized here are in sort of in reverse order of costs. The underground tank replacement is at two of our schools. We have the need, we are mandated that these tanks have a 30-year life, and we need to replace the oil tank at Terracotta School, and we need to put a new tank in. It's a 5,000-gallon tank. And at Simsbury High School, where we've had, we have the opportunity to have natural gas, we're going to take out a 20,000-gallon oil tank and not replace that and just use our natural gas and our emergency generators. There is an extensive amount of sidewalk that needs to be replaced where that tank is buried under currently. So those are priority items that are under a timeframe that has to happen by this fall. The next category is school security improvements. This is a second set of funding requested for all seven schools. The focus of this second phase is, is on the five schools that we're trying to model the entrance, the front vestibules, as we've done at Henry James and Squadron Line with those main office projects that were done several years ago. So we do have support from an architect to, to make some changes to those front entrances so that you would have to enter after the school, school is in session, you'd have to enter through the, through the main office. You wouldn't be able to just gain access right to the school without going in through that main office area. And so we're also looking to, to do work in all seven schools to improve security per audit recommendations from a security audit that was done at all of our schools. Lastly, the Simsbury High School roof project. This is roughly 80%, of the high school roof that has exceeded the 20-year life, lifespan. So when the 2005 renovation project was, was done, there were certainly some new roof areas put on, but the bulk of those roofs were not replaced at that time, so we have our cost estimates for this, this project, and you can see that we would be eligible for partial reimbursement, as we have been in the past for school roof projects, but there's a lengthy grant process, so that would start this, this June if the funding was approved at referendum, and then we, the summer following, summer of 2020 is when we'd actually be able to do construction on that.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Wellman, First Selectmen. I'll be joined in this presentation with Selectmen Sean Ascom. Thank you to the Board of Finance for having us, members of the public who are here tonight, thank you, and thank you to the town staff and department heads who helped contribute to putting this budget together. I'd like to also acknowledge other members of the Board of Selectmen who are here today: Chris Kelly, Cheryl Cook, Mike Payne, and Chris Peterson. Also, State Representative Sean Hampton is here as well. So, we're going to be, I'm going to be presenting the operating portion of the budget, and Sean will be presenting the, the capital portion. So the budget that we advance to the public hearing is a little under $23 million, which represents about an 8.6% increase over last year, or about $1.8 million. I want to point out for the public's understanding that only about half of that 8% is an actual increase that impacts the mil rate. We did some things to increase transparency in budgeting, and in doing so, we moved some items into the operating budget that hadn't been there previously, and those are items that the town has ultimately reimbursed for, thus having no impact on the mil rate but making the operating budget appear significantly higher than last year.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Wellman, First Selectman. I'll be joined in this presentation with Selectman Sean Ascom. Thank you to the Board of Finance for having us. Members of the public who are here tonight, thank you. And thank you to the town staff and department heads who helped contribute to putting this budget together. I'd like to also acknowledge other members of the Board of Selectmen who are here today: Chris Kelly, Cheryl Cook, Mike Payne, and Chris Peterson. Also, State Representative Sean Hampton is here as well. So we're going to be, I'm going to be presenting the operating portion of the budget, and Sean will be presenting the capital portion. So the budget that we advanced to the public hearing is a little under $23 million, which represents about an 8.6% increase over last year, or about $1.8 million. I want to point out for the public's understanding that only about half of that 8% is an actual increase that impacts the mill rate. We did some things to increase transparency in budgeting, and in doing so, we moved some items into the operating budget that hadn't been there previously. And those are items that the town has ultimately reimbursed for, thus having no impact on the mill rate, but making the operating budget appear significantly higher than last year. So in actuality, it's 4.7% higher. So at the request of the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen went back a little over a week ago, and we made about $85,000 in proposed reductions to our budget, which we'll highlight. One thing I want to make clear to the public is that this budget and the 4.7% operating increase, there's not a lot new that we're proposing we're doing. This is a budget that we feel responsibly allows us to continue to provide for the services that our residents want and that we are already providing. So looking at the recommended operating changes, so these are the things that we have, when the Board of Selectmen met a week ago yesterday, these were proposed changes that came out of that meeting. So approximately $85,000 reduction. The first is eliminating the Economic Development Commission marketing and branding materials, which is a savings of about $18,000. The reduction in a part-time position by five hours a week, saving about $8,000. Moving $77,546 from contingency to the police full-time line with no net impact. We are recommending a reduction in the assumption of how much the increase to health insurance will be. We had initially thought it would be closer to 15%. We had some positive news and claims in February, thus reducing that amount by about $74,000. Increasing by $30,000 the contribution to the Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund, making sure that that fund is not operating at a deficit. And finally, we're recommending a $15,000 reduction from CNR, which would be for the wayfinding signage. On the expenditure side, we wanted to highlight the things that are really driving the increase, the biggest of which is clearly health insurance at almost half a million dollars, followed by Social Security and Medicare taxes, contingency for unsettled labor contracts. I want to point out that there's only two things here that are really, I would say that are new, or we would consider to be enhancements. At the bottom, those two items, one is the accountant position for about $54,000, which would be a mid-year higher. Our finance department is really understaffed by any measure, and we feel that this is something that is the responsible thing to do. And secondly, reinstating five hours a week to the library admin assistant is a small increase. So these are the expenditure drivers, and I'll turn it over to Sean to go through capital.
There isn't a lot of stuff out there, isn't there? There's a lot of cords back here. It's like a Christmas tree. So we didn't put any pictures in our presentation, but if anybody wants, this is my daughter. She's really cute. So we'll have to spice it up for next year. So I have the honor of talking to you again about our CNR projects. Again, as we talked about a couple of weeks ago during our presentation, these are merely suggestions for how we want to fund them. Clearly, that's your decision, and there's a lot of different ways to solve this. But we have 21 projects, as I counted when Burke was talking about his three. Obviously, there's a lot in the town site, and I'll get to each one of them. The top priorities, as we look through it, are the replacement for the police patrol cruisers. We have a regimented schedule where we do replace those cruisers. The radio system feasibility study is obviously critical. This is Phase Two. We completed Phase One, and we started to report that out and had that discussion at the last meeting, and we'll continue to look at that. It's critical that we continue to evaluate that system and look for replacement as it has reached its useful life cycle. For a number of years now, we've had an interesting discussion about the Emerald Ash Bore and the mitigation project that we have undertaken. Unfortunately, these trees are dying. They are dying and coming down in the roadway and presenting a hazard, so they are requiring us to take them down. The ice rink condenser is a unit that's in desperate need of replacement at this point. It's beyond its useful life. We have some security fencing at Simsbury Farms around the pool that is older than I am, that really does need to be updated and replaced to make sure that folks are not able to access the pool area when we don't have supervision and lifeguards on duty. And then, as we heard from our friends at the library, in the library, our automated book handler is in need of replacement. It's outlived its useful life as well. You'll notice that that totals up to roughly the CNR payback that we traditionally have in our budget. So again, these would be the recommendations for the CNR fund. As we move on to additional items that are potentially funded through cash, the telephone system is an item that we feel is critical, another system that is pretty antiquated and, again, limits our staff's ability to service the public in a more mobile world. We have reevaluation coming yet again in 2022, and as part of our normal practice, we recommend pre-funding for this over a number of years in conjunction with your board. Deepwater Wind, they have their permits or are working on their, excuse me, their building permits, have the decommissioning plan approved. And we have budgeted, as we've discussed in the past, additional expenditures for the monitoring of those permits. And there's going to be substantial consulting work that comes with that, as it's not a traditional town project. As you'll remember, it was not approved by the local land use commissions. It was approved at the Siting Council level, and it does require additional oversight. As our tradition, we need to buy Public Works a very large truck, as we do every year. These are trucks that are used in the summertime to help us with paving management and other important services, and our friendly plow gentlemen, as they drive around in the wintertime, they do a great job. We have a pickup truck replacement for Parks and Rec. That truck has more miles on it than any car that any of us are driving in this room, and I can assure you it's time to replace. Additionally, we have plow and sander replacement that's needed to maintain our plowing services with our parks department. Paddle courts, resurfacing and painting, another item from a culture Parks and Rec standpoint that we need to maintain our recreational assets. And then, again, the ice rink, it's time to give the underneath a facelift and a paint job. That is the original paint job from when we put the roof in, and is with all our capital assets, so we need to maintain it. Again, we're recommending cash for capital at this point, but again, your board's decision. Items to an alternative revenue source, and we've articulated where we suggest that revenue come from. Interview room and video recording system at the police department. It's critical that this infrastructure be maintained and updated to make sure that our officers are able to exercise their duties and the public is properly protected with their rights as well. This is recommended from the private duty fund. Security camera upgrades to Town Hall and the police department are another item we'd like to come out of the private duty fund. The Eno Clock Tower, as I like to say, depending on what time you drive by Eno, whether it's on time or not, it is in need of repairs. We have, we are very lucky in this town that some folks that came before us endowed that building, and we do have funds that are able to be utilized for the maintenance of that facility. Again, so that is the Eno Trust. Something that we get from the state every year is something called Town Aid Road, which all of you folks are obviously aware of, but for the public, it's a funding source that comes from the state to help us maintain our roadways and equipment that goes with it. We're recommending a pickup truck replacement, an infrared asphalt trailer, and Mr. Roy can explain exactly what that is, but it's a critical piece of item, a critical item for the maintenance of our roads. Plow blades are obviously important. And sanitary sewer line replacement on Route 10, those lines are in need of shoring up and replacement, and the Sewer Use Fund has the capital for that. Moving on, just to make sure that we articulated, we did go back and have, I thought, a thoughtful discussion at the Board of Selectmen level on what were our priorities, what were our high, given the fact that we have 21 projects. We decided not to spend an entire five hours trying to rank all those down to the 1 through 21. But we did give you our top priorities here, which you'll see do line up nicely with the CNR request on the first slide. And if there was something that was considered the last one, it would be the playscape maintenance at this point that we talked about previously. We also did eliminate the wayfinding signage that, as Eric mentioned. So overall, just want to give you a flavor for the buckets from our town departments, where are we asking for capital funds from. Again, paving of our roads, the $1.2 million for maintaining our streets at the level that we deem to be appropriate. Again, this is coming from cash, Town Aid Road, and low sub, and potentially reserves, depending on what's decided this evening. We are entering an endeavor to look at sidewalk resurfacing. You'll notice that that number is 200,000. It was previously brought to you at 300,000. We went back and looked at that and made some changes. On the general government side, we had a good discussion with your board and with ours about the need to update our accounting system. Again, I'll use the less-than-funny joke, but our accounting system, our financial system is older than I am as well, so it's certainly time to get that updated. And again, that will help improve our control environment, increase efficiency, reduce potential error, nothing that I need to explain to you folks, but for the public, something that we need to certainly take a look at. On the culture parks and rec front, we've got greenway improvements as well. Again, we did reduce this number a bit. We had a robust discussion with Maria and Melissa and Amy about what were the necessary maintenance items to make sure that we were addressing safety issues, trip and fall issues, and to continue to maintain that asset, but not necessarily go to the full funding level that we previously discussed. And additionally, there is some plant controllers that are in need of replacement at the sewer facility. So as I mentioned, we did dig deep on capital. These are a list of potential reductions. So the first three are recommendations from our board to yours this evening of the $64,910 for reduction in the greenway improvements, eliminating the capital reserve contribution of 50K. Again, we've started this year new of potentially a small set aside for unplanned capital reductions. Again, we have a healthy fund balance and potentially recommend that that not be put in there, because, again, it could be addressed elsewhere. And we did extend out the sidewalk construction plan from a 15-year schedule to a 20. Again, not necessarily ideal, but this is a new endeavor, and we can certainly look to amend that in the following years if capital is available or other opportunities come before us. You'll notice the last item, we still want to pave, we still need to pave. The $606,000 that we're looking for from a cash contribution could potentially come out of the Hartford Reserves or other places if we didn't decide to bond it this evening or other places. I know we had a good discussion about that. Again, just a suggestion. So if all of these suggestions were taken this evening, you could reduce the capital items by 821,000 with respect to how they go against the mill rate this year. Obviously, it doesn't solve paving in the future, and I know that's apparent to all of you folks. But again, some suggestions. So the prioritization of projects, again, we think the highway pavement management is our number one. Our financial system, we took the B road versus the two roads, so we believe that that is an equally critical item, but it's hard to rank two different things against each other because we believe they're both critical. Again, sidewalk, we believe, is continuing to be a potential safety and access issue. These are assets that are important to our senior population, our children, folks that are out, connectivity to trails, et cetera. And obviously, the greenway improvement is a substantial asset. Don't need to make the case to you folks, and all of us have used the greenway on a regular basis, and we continue to want to fund that. In case anybody's wondering, we are one of the few towns in Connecticut that is actually increasing in population, which is unique to the state of Connecticut. We are particularly proud of that, and that it's a wonderful place to live, wonderful schools. Obviously, folks have different thoughts on apartments and the different types of living establishments that we have in town, but those are approved, they are being built, and we are seeing our population go up. So with that, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
So thank you, Tara and Burke, and Sean and Eric. Those are the budgets that were presented to you, and we would welcome your comments if you would like to speak at the public hearing.
They can just come right up to the podium.
Just come on up to the podium. And we will start with Joan Coe. And Joan, you know the rules, but always please state, no, no, I know, but state your name and address, all right, for the record. Thank you.
She knows the drill. She's done this before. A few times.
Have you done this before?
30 years. The Board of Finance has not taken the leading role in articulating the need for a town budget that is fiscally responsible. The Board of Finance has vacillated throughout their oversight of the budget in what appears to be significant lack of understanding of their mission to forward a budget that is acceptable to the taxpayers. These are the economic forces that the Board of Finance should consider. The cost of living increase in Social Security is 2.8%, with an additional reduction for Medicare, leaving a minimal increase in payments. The state has financial liabilities that will impact the town's revenues. Big Y has their property for sale. The adjacent Wagner property has been vacant for years. Andy's supermarket has remained vacant for years. What is the timeline for construction of the solar panels now that the Siting Council approved the project? The Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts, a private organization, is losing money with a flawed model that is continually being given a reduction of expenditures with waivers that is reflected in the loss of revenue for the town. The headline in a recent Hartford Current article states, "Home Sales Struggling: February Slump Another Sobering Sign of State's Economic Ills." The Silverman Group on the Hartford property has several mechanic liens on the land records and has slowed their development. The supply of residential units exceed the demand that will eventually lower price points with the migration of population and lower assessments. Simsbury has the highest mill rate in the valley, decreasing our competitiveness. With the decrease in student population, the schools should be reconfigured to have elementary schools with kindergarten to second grade, third grade to fifth grade, and sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at the junior high, with nine to 12 at the high school. This would eliminate at least one school and lower overhead costs. The Board of Finance must make the hard choice that reflect the economic reality of less revenue to the town and not kick the can down the road. The proposed budgets are unacceptable without any forward-thinking ideas implemented. The last property assessment reflects decreased taxes in homes above $400,000 with an increase in taxes in homes below that amount. The burden of increased taxes is on the back of the lease that can afford it. The economy is heading for recession, and the Board of Finance just doesn't get it by increasing long-term debt. The mitigating circumstances in the Board of Selectmen budget should be remedied with cuts in line items, and capital budget should be reduced to minimize years of debt. Now is the time, now is not the time to increase spending 4.26%. With all these competing forces, it is up to the Board of Finance to bring a fiscally responsible budget to the taxpayers. Do your job. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else care to speak? Mr. Rinaldi, Dr. Rinaldi? Just watch your step here. There are a lot of, again, just to sign in, put your address down. Appreciate it.
Hi. My name's Mike Rinaldi. I reside at Pinnacle Mountain Road, been a resident here for over 40 years. I guess the new norm is the Board of Selectmen budget will be over 4%. These are the two highest budgets we've had in the past 10 years. None of them ever been over 4%. The reason for that is not because they made some new conclusions in how they present their budgets. As they said, 8.6% is not really it. It's over 4%. That's the new normal. It's unacceptable. The Board of Education budget, again, is not transparent. In our national news, we hear about words like collusion, obstruction, conspiracy, The Board of Education's budget is non-transparent. It's because the whole system is colluded, it's obstructed. And if I have a couple of more minutes, I can explain why that's the case. But let's get to the expenses. But let's get to the expenses. As you can see from their data, there is absolutely no correlation between per pupil costs and the quality of education, not whatsoever. And to prove that, we can use Simsbury as its own control. When I moved to town, the per pupil costs in Simsbury were some of the lowest in the state, and we had the most productive, excellent school system, and we still have it. It's just being mismanaged. Our per pupil costs in 1973 were 129 out of 169 pounds. Now they're 93. Both of the changes have taken place in the past 20 years. During the administration of Dr. Alman, most of these problems occurred. However, with the present superintendent, he hasn't been able to correct the problem. As he said, I've been here seven years, and he hasn't learned how to do the job yet. So what can we do? The problem is, when we had the Henry James Middle School project, it was a flawed project. The problem is, the Board of Finance gave an educated population a chance to make a critical decision on not only improving the quality of the education in Simsbury, but how to reduce the cost. In 2012, there was a couple of programs, not programs, but the NASDAQ study and the—I forget the other study. They basically had to do with improving the quality of the Henry James Middle School. But what happened had three phases, phase one, two, and three. Phase three was somehow the Board of Finance felt that a proper thing to give the public a chance to vote on a flawed project, and it was passed 2 to 1. We have a very educated electorate in our town. 70% of the people have a college education. 30% have an education above college, a doctorate or professional degree. Yet, they had no idea what they were voting for. They were voting for an improvement in the Henry James School, and that's what they voted for. But what they didn't know was, as Joan Coe said, if we paved that school, grade six through eight, we'd improved the quality of education for sixth graders, and we could have cut our budget and cut our per pupil costs because we could align the sixth grade and the eighth grade. Imagine giving those sixth graders a media center, auditorium, new classrooms. I mean, that's unbelievable, what we could have done. But we didn't do it. A third of our classes in Simsbury in the elementary school are under guidelines. What that means is that there are too few kids in some of the classes. If you really believe the class sizes are important for the quality of education, some kids are getting short-changed because there are 16 in some classes and 25 in some other classes. Now, the most expensive thing you can do is teach to an empty seat. Now, the Director of Personnel at the Simsbury School System was given a challenge to fix this problem because our school class guidelines were 23 to 25. They were reduced to 21 to 25, and then down to 19 to 25, yet still 33% of the classes were under guidelines. How do you fix that? Easy. Just reduce the guidelines to 16. Now, if you're a parent out there, and you really believe the quality of education depends not only how much you spend on your child, but how many kids are in that class, then if your kid is in a class with 23 or 24, and some got a class of 16, you're getting So my feeling is that these budgets are non-transparent. There is a collusion between the two parties, Democratic and Republican town committees. There's collusion to give us voters not a chance to vote on the Board of Education, which has become a rubber stamp for an administration of the school system. And when you go to the polls, and they say, "Vote for any two," and all four get elected, that's not an election. That's not good for the taxpayers. That's not transparent, and that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none. We will—we're not going to officially close the public hearing. The Board of Finance will make a determination of that after we have discussion about what we've had, but we will cut off tonight's contributions, all right? So now we'll conduct our Board of Finance meeting, all right? So, looking at our agenda, the things that we need to discuss tonight are—the ultimate decision is to whether these budgets are ready to be referred to referendum. And if they are not, or we have issues, then we need to address those and make recommendations to the respective boards, if that's where we want to go. And then we would have the opportunity to reopen the public hearing before we had a final determination to send it to referendum. So everybody understands what we're trying to accomplish tonight. All right. So there are some things that I believe we should discuss and be clear on as a board, and I think probably the best way to do that would be to, first of all, sort of go through the Board of Education budget and the expense budget. We'll do it, Board of Education budget, then the Board of Selectmen budget, and then treatment of capital. I know these are intertwined. But the first question I'd ask for the members of the board is, we had recommended 2%, we came in at 2.2. The Board of Ed went back and made some cuts after we discussed that with them. Good faith. I guess I'd just ask for a general response about the stat, how you feel about the overall budget, and maybe just prime that with a couple of questions. One is, the use of the non-lapsing account against—so, a couple of things I'd like you to comment on. The 12% assumption for the insurance fund, the use of the non-lapsing account at the amount of $300,000. And just a quick question, how much would be left in the non-lapsing account? $85,000. $85,000, thank you.
You got that from their spreadsheet, subtracting out the 3, 85.
Is it 85, or is it 112?
It's 85. It's 300,000.
And I think those are the main topics, I believe, as it relates to the Board of Ed budget. So who wants to jump in?
I'm just—if someone could, to the extent, also talk about the underlying rationale for changing the section from the 14 to 12.
I guess I'll take a shot at it, because you may have missed some of the discussion, but if you'd like—I said I would—
You can jump in.
I'll give a claim statement, it's the main criteria from when we were looking at the four scenarios when we met for the town presentation. We did not have the benefit of February's. And there was a lot of work done with Linda, and Lisa, and Amy, and Maria on looking back at where we were and questioning how we've done this. And I think ultimately, we came to the understanding that in order to be in the middle of the range of what we thought was acceptable for expenditures, that the 12% increase, based on the—it's not just one month, it's now eight months, going back to July of last year for this year, that the 12% would be appropriate.
So I'll chime in and say, I appreciate the Board of Ed's efforts to come in as close as they could to our guidance, and I'm wondering, now that we know that at least the Legislative Committee, Education Committee, has deep-sixed the proposal, I know you've built in some cost for the teacher pension stuff that would come your way.
So that's actually—it's aligned, I'm in the Board of Ed, I mean, the Board of Selectmen, the $300,000.
Okay, so that lowers yours, so it doesn't lower yours at all, but it does lower yours. So when we come to yours, if you can just give us sort of a revised—
We're talking—
Sorry.
That's okay.
Had it in the wrong place in my mind. And I do want to thank you for, you know, also being willing to look at putting your non-lapsing account towards, you know, the whole insurance thing. And I think one of the things we need to talk about is that extra $85,000. I would submit to go towards the, like, still the insurance issue. We not only need you to help with the premiums, but also to help with the building up of the reserves. So if that excess could go towards that, that would help in that direction.
Thank you, Derek. No, I commend the Board of Ed in coming in as close as they did to guidance at 2.2. You know, on a dollar for dollar, it's less than increase for the Board of Selectmen. I mean, that's notable, so thank you for that. In terms of healthcare, eight months of a trend, quote unquote, doesn't account for the three to five years of underfunded health costs, premiums. So I don't know if I agree with reducing it to 12. I think we should maintain that 14 and talk about maybe other ways of backfilling the gap. So that's where I am on—and then, you know, absent the capital side, I do have some questions about some of these cost numbers. Again, just, you know, just for, you know, to make it relative to what I do in the real estate business, you know, $22 a square foot to replace a roof, I mean, or replace, you know, industrial warehouse roofs of a million square feet, from 50,000 square feet to a million square feet at about half of that cost, including replacement of insulation as well. And that's like a full tear-off of a roof, so 22 bucks. It just makes me, you know, wonder who's auditing the costs and what's happening, if at all, to anything with cost savings, and whether that's getting reallocated or not. But that's more of a capital question than it is operating budget, and I give you guys a lot of credit for coming in the way you did, so thank you.
I want to echo the thanks of the other members of the Board of Finance for being so open and accessible to us. I thought one of the things the Board of Finance does very well in their budget book, which is posted online, they put in fiscal notes about why things have changed over time. So if you look at their budget, there's a quick explanation as to why the number changed year from year, and that was very helpful to me in understanding your budget, and I just wanted to thank you for everything that you did, and also for being accessible to all of us for questions. And I echo that support to the town as well, who took many of our questions, and very much appreciated for that. A couple of questions, and I'm not sure that this is the right time, so Rob, if you want them answered differently. Two questions. One, I did reach out to Representative Hampton on the teacher pension contribution and asked, "So is that done? Can we take it out?" And his response was, "No, things could still change, and if it's not the teacher pension contribution, it will be some other amount, because the state's numbers are the numbers, and you can't count on that reduction." I don't know, you know, if you want to ask Representative Hampton, and Maria probably has information from some of our lobbyists as well. So I think it's still an uncertain number, so I would not recommend taking that out at this point. And then, also going on at the state with the governor's debt diet and the roof replacement being contingent upon getting state money for that, I was wondering if the debt diet could have a potential negative impact this year. Is that something we can rely on? We're looking at pretty draconian cuts in bonding by the state. So I put that out there.
So I also appreciate the efforts done by the Board of Ed relative to our requests. We haven't always been as kind, and I recognize that.
Really? Don't give us that much.
No, no, no. So I do appreciate an honest, conservative effort, you know, for .2, which is $140,000, real money, I get it, but we could get half of it by taking away the non-lapsing account, but on the other hand, I think a little bit of cushion in your budget is not a bad thing to have. So I basically will defer to that board and suggest that—I don't have any material. I think that, to Derek's point about the 12% versus 14, I think it is important, and that's a separate conversation, about funding the Internal Service Fund by allocating some of our reserves as we look at assigned and unsigned reserves, which is not part of this discussion. We would do that separately as a Board of Finance. All right? Any other comments on that? We'll defer—yeah, sure.
I have one little capital question for Burke. When you were talking about the tanks, you mentioned converting to natural gas at one school, but not the other. How come you can't do both?
So Terrifield does not have that service, so that's not an option.
Gasoline doesn't go over there?
No, it does not.
And you can't do propane tanks for something that big?
Yeah, yeah. So—
Burke, if you have it in front of you, there was the $325,000 for the removal of the tank—
Yeah.
And then, I know there was some sidewalk or paving that needed to be redone, significant amount. And then, what, was it the purchase of another tank?
So Terrifield needs a brand-new underground tank for oil. So it's the removal and the replacement, whereas the high school is just removal and sidewalk replacement, but not a new tank.
And how large is the Terrifield tank, the new tank?
That's a 5,000.
5,000? And they'll bury it again?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So let's turn our focus then to the Board of Selectmen's operating budget, and I know these get very intertwined as it relates to CNR, capital, and the like, but let's look at the specific—any specific items that we might take exception or have questions about relative to operating expenses. I'll start with Lisa.
So as we did last year, we took—there's—in—first of all, I'll start with thank you to everyone who worked on this budget. I know it was a ton of work, and you guys did a great job with it, so thank you for that, and again, for being open to questions. Last year, we took the plow truck out of CNR and put it in baseline operating budget. By baseline operating budget, I mean, there is some capital that you do occasionally, and you bond for it. There is some capital that's extra that you need that you hadn't planned for, and then there's baseline capital. And baseline capital traditionally has been accomplished in the operating budget through CNR for 416, 180 for pavement management in Mr. Roy's budget, and some minor capital in the library and the technology budget as well. And then there's been some baseline capital, $850,000, that we bonded for pavement management for improvements that last about 17 years. I was able to confirm with Mr. Roy earlier today. So appropriate bonding. During the fiscal crisis of 2008, the plow truck moved into CNR. It used to be part of just Mr. Roy's operating budget, so he had the 180 for paving and 180 for the truck, and then there was the 416— And then there was the 416 for CNR. But during the crisis, when you had no money, that got put into CNR, so it reduced the operating budget by 180, but it also reduced what you could spend in CNR, creating a capital crunch. And is Tom Toberski here? Yes. And it mostly hit culture parks and rec. And then the crisis got even worse, and I think Rob mentioned that, what happened with the governor when he proposed his draconian situation. And we were going to be hit with four to six million dollars of additional expenses. And to accommodate that change, we moved the police vehicles out of their operating budget and put it in CNR. So that reduced CNR to about $100,000, when it used to be 416. So if you do that for a decade, that's a reduction, 3 million in base capital needs for the town. So last year, we moved the plow truck out and put it back in the operating budget, and it was a neutral move that year. But it's a, technically, it's an increase to the base budget. It was an appropriate increase to the base budget, because we're now in a capital squeeze, where we're just, things are crumbling. I'm recommending that we do the same with the police vehicles, do this course correction, and move it back into the police department operating budget. Now, I will say, just, we've got new staff and new terms, and there's a new budget called the Capital Reserve Fund. That is also an operating expense, so whether it's actually in your PD budget or as a baseline capital. But it should be, the things we purchase every single year need to be in the operating budget to the extent you can. We'll get into pavement management afterwards, and whenever you're ready for that, we'll talk about whether we should bond a pavement manager or not. But I, but I, and I don't know when you're taking motions, but I do want to make a motion to move the police vehicles out of CNR and put that as a baseline in the operating budget, because that will help relieve now, instead of having, and we'll give you the 416 in CNR for multiple things. You will have the 180 and the 130. So it is a net, again, moving the police vehicles out this year is mill rate neutral this year. It does hit the operating budget the following year, but it is a baseline capital need. And I think it's time that we put it back where it was and where it belongs, since we pay for it every year. So that is my first suggestion.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
Lisa and I have had interminable conversations on this topic, along with the basement. But, so I'm not entirely persuaded on, about it being baseline, but the thing that is more persuasive to me, that you didn't mention, is that the police vehicles turnover over three years.
Yes.
And the CNR budget is a, is a five-year payback period, so the two don't really match up. So it does make some sense to me that because they have a shorter life, you shouldn't be paying for them for a longer period than they're actually around. So, sorry to interrupt, but I just.
Oh, that's an excellent point.
I'm still, I'm still on the fence, but anyway, I understand.
That is, well, that's another reason for it not to be in CNR. And if you put it in capital, the one thing I think, and Moira, you can help me out with this, because I know we go back and forth, cash for capital has never existed. I believe that is your line. I'm going to get a T-shirt that says that. But what we do every year is, there's a debt service line in our budget. And debt services, if we think about your car payment, is what is your car payment? The debt service is what do you pay every year on the debt that you borrow? We try and keep that steady at 6.7%, but occasionally, you bond stuff, and it's not a great world. Occasionally, things drop off, like you paid for the high school, and suddenly, oh, you know, holiday, we don't have to make that car payment, hooray, until you have to buy the next car. And you, what you can do during that gap time is you can go taxpayer holiday, hooray, taxes are lower this year, and then psych next year, the way up again. Or you can use that gap, and, and this is the cash for capital that emerged, and it was unfortunate that it happened when it did, because it only happens like every 20 or 30 years. It just doesn't happen that often. It just coincidentally happened the last year, and then again this year, and one more year. But what you can do during that time is you can make up the gap from some of the other years where you weren't able to buy capital, because you've crunched capital in the CNR with the plow truck and the PD vehicles. And that's what we're able to do this year, which is why you're seeing a bunch of little spending there. But you can't rely on that spending, because some years, your debt service is back at that 6, 7, and you don't have that capacity. So we do have that capacity, we had a little last year, we have some this year, and we'll have a little next year, and then it's gone. So that can't be included as your baseline capital, because it's inconsistent. And sometimes you use that cash capacity, as Moira's pointed out beautifully multiple times. Sometimes you say, okay, instead of the taxpayer holiday, geez, this year we've got to, we've got a one-time infusion, we've got to put into the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. So, okay, yeah, we're going to keep our debt service low where it is during this dip period, but guess what? We're going to bump up a one-time bump in the Health Insurance Reserve Fund to make up that gap, so it keeps the baseline, the mill rate, the same. So you use that as a tool to catch up sometimes when there's a dip. So those are sort of the policy points we need to talk about. I know, Moira, you've been on the board probably, I think, the longest of all of us, so I didn't know if you wanted to add to sort of the cash for capital conversation.
No, I mean, you could borrow from Peter to Dave Hall is basically what you do.
So I, we've had many discussions about this both, you know, over the last couple. It seems, this is the way I would like to think about it, but we just, you know, we have, we have budget buckets that we have to think about as well. But we, we're not discussing whether we buy the police vehicles or not. We're going to buy the police vehicles, right? We're going to buy the plow truck.
Right.
The question is, how does it hit the budget? Is it going to be a one-time operating expense? That's what Lisa's recommending for the police cars.
But I'm recommending that because it's an every-year expense. They spend one.
That was going to go there next, because it's not a one-time deal. It's something that we do. And so you could buy them, depreciate them over three years, and have one-third every year, and then you could buy them, and the net effect is the same. And so putting those in, into operating expense seems to make sense. The plow truck, you're recommending we do.
We did that last year, so it's done.
We're not buying a plow truck this year?
We already put it in the baseline operating, so it's not, it's baked into our operating budget.
So we buy one every year and expense it?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, is that good? That's good, right?
We had to transfer to CNR.
What?
And CNR.
But it's still part of your baseline, which is why when we met before, I said, keep it in the operating budget and then do the transfer after we pass the budget, so that we can keep it straight. It's still part of your baseline. It doesn't increase the mill rate. It's, it's a baked in to the mill rate.
So we're going to buy the police cars, and they're going to be in the operating budget. That'll be an expense. We're going to buy the plow truck, and it's going to be a CNR expense, which means that one-fifth of it will hit the.
No.
No?
So here, this is the problem we had, and Amy and I have joked about this, is we use terms interchangeably.
Right.
Amy comes from a different town, where they use terms differently. There's, CNR today has two components to it. In the past, it was just the CNR payback, which is the five-year payback. Our CNR fund today has both the 416 payback and then other stuff we stick there. So what Maria is proposing this year is, okay, yes, that plow truck is there, it's there every year, it doesn't affect the mill rate, because it's already baked into our budget, but instead of putting it in Tom's line item budget, let's just put it in the new account. It's still a baked-in item. It was there in the past, it's still there today. And she calls it CNR, because that's the name of the fund, but it's not the CNR that we know it.
It's not spread over five years.
Right. It's the CNR, it's just a holding period, it's just an accounting move.
Can we call it something else? Because that does make it rather.
That, I think, is an excellent idea. Maybe we just.
Short-term.
Five-year payback. Five-year payback, non-five-year payback.
All right, so are we putting anything in the five-year payback bucket this year?
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen proposed the $130,000 for police vehicles in the 416 to 50, which is part of the five-year payback.
That was the list of things that Sean went through. So both, they, so the Board of Selectmen is suggesting that both those, the 416 and the police vehicles, go into the five-year payback.
So that, so the police vehicles was in the five-year payback last year, and I'm arguing that's a mistake, because we, you buy police vehicles every three years, and the payback is five. And because you buy them every year, it should be part of the, so it shouldn't be in CNR.
And it's only been done one year.
Yeah, or a couple of years.
So there are, there are police cars in the five-year payback.
Yes.
That are being run off over the next four years, correct? And you're saying, don't put the new ones in that, put them in the operating.
Yes, right, yes.
The plow truck goes into capital, which is a cash for capital account?
Well, no, it's operating capital.
Which you call CNR.
Right. It goes into CNR, but it's not part of the five-year payback.
Right.
No, it's not a one-time, it's a baked-in expense. It used to be an operating, think of it as, it's, I'll just make a motion, we'll put the plow truck and police vehicles back in operating, and then there's no confusion, because it's the same amount. And then after we pass the budget, if you guys want to transfer that money into the capital, you could do that. It, it's sort of, even if we don't make that change, try and think of it that way, it's really an operating budget. And then they did a lateral shift.
So I'd be in favor of whatever we want to do, and then do it that way forever.
You try best.
This is, this is really, makes my, makes my head hurt. All right, so. So, so we have a little work to do, just be sure that we have all the definitions right. I don't think I can walk out of here tonight without reconveniencing, making sure that we all know exactly what's in bucket. But there's one, another question we can answer, which is, I believe the Board of Selectmen have suggested that we take money out of an assigned fund balance and use it to pay for paving. And I would suggest that instead of that, that we bond for the paving again this year, as we have in the past, for part of it. Half of it would be in the operating expense, right?
The 1.8.
Well, the 180.
Yeah. What?
The 180.
1.8.
What is the 1.8?
Sure.
Oh, no.
So paving had a number of revenue sources. Again, pursuant to the capital budgeting policy you had adopted, there was approximately $180,000 in the operating budget that was used.
$180, what?
In the operating budget, that was really used for repaving of roads.
Okay.
So we had proposed doing a transfer of that to the capital budget. So that was a revenue source. That was not new cash, that was just existing cash. We had also proposed using some funds from Town Aid Road for paving. So essentially, that would be cash, LOSEP, using LOSEP funds, so that would essentially be, be cash. And then originally, the Board of Selectmen had proposed using some of that cash capacity to pay for the remainder. That was about $606,000, and using cash for that. Again, when they were asked to consider bonding, after your, your last meeting with them, the board felt more comfortable suggesting, again, perhaps maybe use of reserves or cash, but felt less comfortable with bonding. I'm not sure if Eric or Sean, if you wanted to add to that.
I mean, just, so if, if you choose to bond this, I mean, you'd be bonding 600,000.
Right.
Right. So not 1.2 million.
Understood. No, that's right, yeah, yeah.
You cut that out, after bonding 300,000, which I believe is starting to get lower than the required number in our plan, so.
What's in the six-year capital improvement plan that came out originally was 1.185?
Multiple, multiple revenue sources. So that was the multiple revenue sources that we just did sort of the breakdown.
And also, Maria, you mentioned to Lisa and I yesterday that you moved some of that, because it used to be 1.3, and that you've put some into operating.
Sure, there, sure, there is still a very small amount of paving money in operating that was typically go towards paving. It's things such as, you know, patching potholes, some of that smaller-scale work, that again, didn't really quite meet the definition of capital under the new capital budgeting policy. So there is a small amount, again, of paving things associated with patching and that type of thing that's within operating. But the 1.185 is truly, you know, repaving, repaving roads.
And so one thing that I asked Amy about, because this is another topic that Lisa and I have debated endlessly, is, you know, one of the reasons that the Board of Selectmen, I think, was proposing that we put it in the operating budget was because in 10 years, it would save us the bonding costs associated. And so asked Amy, well, exactly how much is that? And I think he said it was 184,000, 182, something like that.
Over 10 years.
And to me, that's pretty small, saving 10 years from now, you know, roll back, you know, how much is 180,000 in 10 years worth to you today? And is it worth the pain of moving this into the operating budget and making your operating budget look bigger? And what's going to happen in 10 years when you save that 184,000? In my experience, whoever's here will spend it instantly, and there won't really be any savings to the taxpayers at all, because that's how budgeting works. So for me, the notion of moving it into the operating budget doesn't bring any value. I would, we've debated this multiple times before. I would just like to have a final decision, and as you said, make a decision and stick with it. And the decision I would make is leave it where it is.
Okay. So why don't we take, why don't we knock a couple of these off?
So one of the things I would just add, and Derek made a good point, it's not that you'd bond 600,000 every year. Typically, the town, the way it bonds for pavement is they'll say, okay, we'll go out to bond every two or three years. So you might bond 1.2 million or 1.8 million, is sort of the thinking about that for the public. This is so complicated, I'm sorry, I'm probably going to bore some people with this, but if you think about a financial advisor, and they come to you and they tell you, gosh, the best advice thing you can do is when you buy a car, buy a used car and pay cash. Go ahead and spend that 30,000. And you go, oh, yeah. And then you look, open your bank account, and you go, ooh, if I do that, I can't pay for college this year. Or, ooh, gosh, I'm really going to have to cut back on groceries. Or, oh my gosh, if I do that this year, I can't do that. So most people go to the car place, and they say, well, gee, I don't, I can't really afford to spend 30,000. What can I do? And they say, well, give me 1,000, and I'll charge you 250 a month. Can you afford that? And you go, oh, yeah. And then you say, well, what's the interest you're charging me? And sometimes they'll say, zero loan interest. And you go, wow, with that interest rate at zero or 1%, I can take the money I have in my bank and put it in savings and earn 2%. So I'm paying for my interest rates. If, if interest rates ever got to 15%, you'd have a different conversation with the, the car dealer. But when interest rates are low, as they are now, and as Linda said, we're talking about 18,000 a year in savings, paying for cash, but you're going to have to dip into your bank account and pay that full 30,000 for the car. Is that worth it to you at this point? And is there better use of the time, of the money? And one of the things we're hearing from Maria is, gosh, there's this capital crunch out there. For three years, you were short 3 million dollars, because you put everything in CNR. Gosh, we need to make up some of that. Well, how do you make up that money if you're paying cash for pavement management? Well, if you bond it, you're paying a fifth of that about, because you pay it, or a tenth of that over the 10 years, because interest rates are so low. And then you've got a capacity of about $500,000, where you can make up for the cash crunch. And so it's not spending things that you want, it's spending things that you need, like a compressor for the ice rink. It's for, replace the 40-year-old truck for Tom. Isn't it 40 years' time at this point?
It's got a shorter time limit on it.
All right. You report, it's about paying for the things you need, and the question is, how do you pay for it in a way that, as Joan pointed out, that you can afford? Because if you're going to increase the mill rate a lot, and it goes above Joan's point, which is the cola, then people are dipping into their pocket and going to eat less that month, because they don't have the money they're making up. Whereas if you bond it, you can get everything you need and lower, keep the mill rate reasonable. So you have to balance what you want, what you need, and what you can afford, and what bonding lets you do in this case, because interest rates are so low. And then Joan also made an excellent point, well, you have to look at your total bonding. Are you bonding out of control? Well, I think your intern put together this most wonderful chart, which shows our bonding is really low compared to our comparison towns. We've done a great job with bonding. So you, those are the things you weigh, which is why I do support Linda on this, which is ironic, I guess, because.
It took me a long time to get her there.
Because last year, I suggested with the excess funds we have from the state, that we move it into operating, because at that point, we could have done it without the mill rate impact. But this board at the time thought it was more important, thinking about what we can afford as a community, to give that money back to the taxpayers and let them use their good sense, common sense, and keep their money in their pocket. And that's a very, was a very reasonable, I think, decision at the time, given the economic climate. So different policy considerations. But because this would be such a huge hit, yeah, you can do it. We can pay cash for it, and it works this year, and it works next year, and then the third year, oops, you got no capacity. What are you going to do? You're either going to bond, well, if you're going to bond in the third year, you better start planning for it now, because your debt capacity has taken up. Or you have to go to the mill rate and raise that to cover your pavement management, so that's 850,000, because right now, we're using some excess reserves in tar, and again, oh, by the way, that's going to go away, the excess reserves, so it's going to be about 850. Or you can go back to your budget, the Board of Selectmen, and say, okay, you want to pay cash for pavement management, great, go cut 850,000 elsewhere from your budget so you don't impact the mill rate. I don't see that as realistic or attainable, and as a way to meet the needs of the residents. So, you balance the tools you have with what's affordable to our residents and what they can pay out of their pocket. And you do have to keep in mind COLA, and I want to thank Sean Askin, who reached out to me immediately and said, we lowered our budget so it's below COLA. So, thank you-
Just saying.
-for that phone call, I do appreciate that. Not the 4.7% that Dr. Rinaldi pointed out, but the overall. Once we pull up the mill rate worksheet, you will see that that does get us there. So, that's sort of long-winded, and I did warn Rob in advance that it was going to take me a long time to get it all out. So, thank you for that.
So, your position again is to bond?
My position is, in this situation-
In summary.
In summary, my, my suggestion is that you bond pavement management, which will save you 500,000, in three, two years, I don't know if you have the chart, Amy, that you can pull up, the Barbara Pettigene part.
The debt chart.
But, but in two years, there's no cash capacity, so what are you going to do, you know?
Right.
And you take that 500,000 that you, that we're saving by bonding, and you bank it. And you put it in this new capital reserve fund, not CNR payback, but it's a capital fund which enables us to keep money over year to year for 500,000. And then you use a 100,000 a year for five years, and suddenly, now you've gone from only having 100,000 in CNR for capital to 400,000 in CNR for capital, 1.80 for the truck, 1.30 for the police vehicle, and 100,000 by banking the pavement management a year. So, suddenly, you are now on a path to catch up from the capital crunch, and it will sell, now you say, well, what happens after five years, Lisa? And I say to you, well, hopefully, we've caught up from the capital crunch. But if we haven't, that's the time where you look at adjusting your base capital down the line, and you start planning for that now. So, that's how I think about it.
All right, so let's try to get this into a motion that we can approve based on this discussion. I'll just note, no one's talking about whether we should or shouldn't buy any of this stuff, right? We need these, we need these things. It's all about accounting, geography, I call it, on the P and L, I know, we don't have a profit-loss statement, we have expected revenues. And I think we get lost on, we, me, I get lost often in the sources of the funds and how it's financed. But the fact of the matter is, we do need these things, and we'll figure, we should figure out a way that makes sense. So, I would guess the first, the first thing I would say is, let's have a motion to put the police vehicles into the operating budget.
So, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I can't make up my mind.
That's as good as we're going to get from Linda.
It's still, it's still, all right, the second item is to, do we need to do anything with the plow truck? You're going to tell me again, it's already in there.
You don't need to do anything with the plow truck, it's safe, and it's base, and it's not CNR, it's base.
So, the next would be to recommend that we bond for the paving in the amount of?
I would just term it that we reject the Board of Selectmen's suggestion to move paving into the operating budget, just leave it where it is.
Well, I think we do have to affirmatively-
No, their, their revised budget has it where?
Right, it's in, it's in capital, it's in capital.
It's just being funded via reserves.
Yeah, the original request was a cash expenditure out of the, what nobody likes to call CNR, but the cash for capital, the revised is to take it out of the found Hartford funds.
Yeah, so we reject, I want to have a motion to reject that.
Right.
So, I'm gonna-
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we need a motion to say that we will, that that, those, a portion of the pavement management program will be bonded.
Amy, can you get us that number, is that 600?
605,000.
Whatever portion is not funded by tar and loss, it can be bonded.
Is that true?
You can just pick that up with your final motion when you approve all the capital.
So, the amount to be bonded would be 606,500.
Okay.
But when you decide what to bond at the end, I would-
Well, we'll pick that up, but I think we were talking about changes to what we were talking about, so let's make that motion.
I'll move that, I'll move that we bond 600.
Can we just make a clarification, because Lisa said to take the 500,000 in savings and put it in-
Second motion.
That's a different motion.
That'll be the second motion.
Okay. I just want to be clear, we're keeping the 606 in the budget, we're just doing a transfer into-
No, we're keeping it in the operating budget, but where it says cash, we're going to do bond, so change it from a C to a B. Or bonding that.
In the capital budget.
Capital budget.
But in the operating budget, the 606 is sitting in there right now, so we're taking that out.
No, you have the 606 in the capital budget, right?
Yes, but it's being paid for via cash via the operating budget.
Yes, so we are taking that, it would be in the capital budget through bonding.
Right.
So, you're freeing up 600,000 in the-
The 600,000 that we're saving via bonding, are we moving that to the CNR fund?
Well, wait.
That's a separate, separate issue.
But is that what?
Yes, that's the intent, that's the intent. Then we'll take that savings.
But that's not the motion.
The motion, there are two motions, the first is, should we bond pavement management? And the reason why I'm arguing we should is that those improvements last 17 years, well within the definition of what capital is, although it's not full reconstruction, it's, what do you call it, Tom, mill overlay?
Resurfacing.
Yeah, resurfacing. But it's a 17-year improvement, so well within the definition of capital. So, I will make the motion that we bond pavement management in the, in the amount of 600-
6,000.
6,000.
500.
500, 606,500.
And 12 cents.
So, I need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make a motion.
All right, so now the next part of this.
So, now I'll make a motion, because that then gives you savings, right? Because you're bonding, and those savings are, we still have to do debt service, right? So, what is the debt service about?
Will it reduce-
A tenth of that.
So, your total savings would be about 546,500.
Does, is that net of debt service?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I would move that we take the 540, I'm sorry.
546,500.
That number.
Mm-hmm.
And put it in the new-
We need a new name for this fund.
The Amy Fund.
The Small Capital Fund.
The Small Capital Fund is a good name for it. Put it in the Small Capital Fund with the intention that it should be used over five years to help supplement small cash purchases. So, you'll use 100,000 each year from that, it's going to sit there and we're banking it, you have it.
So, that's an assigned fund balance.
Right.
So, I need a little help with that one, because if we bond this rather than taking it as cash, doesn't that create, I mean, I, I'm hearing you say that we have a sort of backlog of small capital things that need to be done.
Right.
I'd be more inclined to use that savings to pay for some of the small capital things that you need done.
So, that's my intent, that's my intent.
But that are in this year's operating budget, to reduce the operating budget.
So, you could do that, that's not my intent, but I, I'm open to it, but what I'm saying is, and we may need another meeting for this, but what I'm saying is, you take that 500,000, because you're going to need it, remember, I don't know, can you pull up the chart, the Barbara Pettigene part? Because in a few years, you've got no cash-
26 and 28, yeah.
Yeah, you've got no cash capacity, so you're going to need to spend it, you're going to have 416, remember, I only had 100, those who are on my board, you're going to have 416, the truck, the police vehicle, and 100,000 a year to spend on little capital.
Yeah, and I, and I, one more, I just said, I mean, part of it is, if you do sort of catch up with your capital, small capital items now, you don't need as much later.
Correct.
And also, you know, that's a few years out, and we haven't really looked at the CIP plan for what projects are out there.
Yes.
And some of those projects are nice-to-do projects, but not urgent projects.
Right.
So, there's ample opportunity to delay or-
That's true.
Ignore some of those, to stay in line.
Stay with the six.
So, I'm not convinced that we will definitely be, you know, in trouble with capital.
So, the other thing I would say, in the Small Capital Fund that we're calling it, you could also take that money, it doesn't have to be used for little purchases, if for some reason we come flush with money or you decide you don't need it, you could take that money that we banked and say, oh, you know what, this year, we're doing really well, grand list has grown through the roof, let's pay off all debt and use that money, and we'll pay it off and clear up some debt going forward. Or you could say, whoa, we're in really great shape, we don't need this money to buy little stuff, guess what, let's prepay some capital.
So, why don't we just- So, what, so we're going to call this a Small Capital Fund, and that's a brand-new fund, and it's going to be used how? How is it different?
We're so reluctant to-
Excuse me.
Sorry.
We're going to create a new Small Capital Fund, and it's going to have money in it, and it's going to be used how? What are the rules for that fund?
So, I would say we have the fund.
Let that exist.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think that was something we ever debated, was creating this fund.
Right, so, so, we're, we just put in our new capital policy, and we're about to add something brand-new to it, which is a Small Capital Fund that's funded with $500,000 in the 1920 budget. And what will the rules be about how it can be used going forward? Will it sit there until we need it? How fast can we spend it? Lisa has suggested $100,000 a year, but what if we have 250, we're going to have a 20-minute conversation about that next year?
Hopefully.
So, that's one. Second, is it really any different than just reducing the expense budget by five, by the 606,000 and letting the money go into the general fund?
That's okay, too.
So, why are we complicating this?
It's giving us more flexibility.
Because, because I was trying to give some certainty to town staff who have-
No, I, but it creates, so, no, no offense to anyone about what I'm going to say, I always hate when people say that, in all earnestness, speaking quite frankly. It's these little pockets of money that we create, and then we move money in and out, and that makes my head hurt, honestly.
It's not actually as transparent.
It's the opposite of that. And so, if really what we're saying is, we don't want to expend the 500,000, we want to borrow and, and do it, then let's just take it out of the operating budget and let it flow to the general fund.
I agree.
What's wrong with that?
There's nothing wrong with that.
What am I missing?
Nothing.
Because, because the next thing we're going to do is talk about assigned and unassigned fund balances, all right?
So, I would say there's nothing wrong with that, I think it gives, it makes planning harder, because each budget cycle, you have to come and ask, and it-
So, that's what that means.
Oh, Lee was looking at me.
Oh, sorry. But I, I want to-
So, how, yeah, so-
I thought you guys had explained-
So, how the Board of Selectmen and the staff feel about those two recommendations? Create a fund and have it available over some set period of time, or just reduce the operating expense and increase the fund balance?
So, just to be redundant, and the experts can correct me, but this is in line with the capital policy that you all passed a couple of meetings ago, where we renamed the funds, the CNR fund, the capital reserve fund, so this has already been done by your board with our consultation, and we're not suggesting that you set up a new fund. If you'll remember, I suggested moving 50,000 out of our capital line item that would have gone to the capital reserve fund. I believe what Lisa's suggesting is that you put the 546,500 into the capital reserve fund for the items that Maria and Amy and Melissa have suggested are future capital items. So, this is not a new fund, or a Small Capital Fund.
That makes more sense to me, too.
It's consistent with what we thought you guys set up, and again, we would appreciate the flexibility, and again, it does put guide rails around what we can and can't spend, and we understand that it would be there for a period of time. If we come to you and use it up in two years, then we understand it's going in two years. If we use it up in five years, we understand that. But again, this is what I believe town staff has recommended, to stabilize capital in the future while staying within our debt service guidelines-
Okay.
And understand that we bond for projects.
The capital reserve fund was for 50,000.
It was 50,000.
And that was for unexpected emergencies, not for planned capital.
Well, that's fair, yeah.
Still a capital reserve fund, I mean, at the end of the day, you're still, you're still levying the mill rate with a debt service number that takes 546 and allocates it towards a capital fund which can be used for capital expenditures. It's within the debt service line item from a, from a levy standpoint, and it still has the same intended usage of capital reserves.
You could do it any way you want.
Right, it's just one suggestion.
You could fund it with 100,000 and send 446 back to the general.
Give us a million, you can put it in the general fund, you can use the Hartford money, you can do whatever you want, there's lots of ways to do this. At the end of the day, I think Lisa's correct, and we need flexibility as a community to continue to buy trucks and plows and police cars and everything else, this gives you an option.
And Maria and Amy, same answer, or?
Right, I mean-
They'll give you a better one.
With your new policy, we did talk pretty extensively about the need for a capital reserve, if you wanted to put additional funds in the capital reserve with the intent of using that money down the road to pay for cash for capital items when, you know, debt service is going to consume that, that would be a way to pay for future capital items.
So, yeah, and you're asking the same question, so who has discretion over that fund?
Right, so, right, under the policy, we do not have the ability to just transfer those funds, so we would essentially, either, if it was through the annual budgeting process, would need to come to you with a plan, and then you would have to essentially approve a transfer of the funds out of the reserve to cover, you know, the various planned projects. If it was, again, an emergency expense, that's different, we would come to you mid-budget cycle.
All right, so one more question, and this is really for Sean. If we put the full $500,000, 546,500 into the capital reserve fund, how have we helped the mill rate?
You haven't.
You haven't.
If we put it into the general fund?
You haven't.
If you allocate-
No, no, yeah, because you've, you've reduced the op, you've reduced the-
General fund.
The mill rate.
You've reduced the expenditures by 546,000.
How the funding.
What?
The debt service line item before you this evening is still 67, or the number that we showed you before. If you don't change the debt service number, you don't change the mill rate.
Now, I'm confused.
No, can I, can I take this one? So, the 600,000 that you're suggesting would reduce the operating budget?
Right.
So, you can do that, and it will have a mill rate impact, but if you want to put that money in a signed, a signed fund balance for future use, you cannot reduce that operating budget, and there's no mill rate-
Understood, understood.
Right, so there's no mill rate impact.
But, if we did take it and just reduce the operating budget, and didn't put it into an assigned fund-
Right.
And we wanted to maintain a level general fund balance, that's one of the, that's, and that's, we're, we're a couple of agenda items away. We're a couple of agenda items away. If you want to keep the 15%, then you would not have to tax as much this year to stay at the same fund balance percentage or level.
Right. So you just want to reallocate on a signed fund balance to assign, to save for these projects, and reduce it from the operating?
No.
Or you just don't want to save anything?
No, I'm saying, we're not spending the money. We're borrowing. We're gonna bond for it, and we're taking it out of the expense budget. And if we're gonna keep everything else even, we don't have to tax for it. So the mill rate should go down.
As long as you're not expecting to keep that money for future use, yes. Then you're right.
Correct, right.
Rob, what you're saying is, in the future, if we need it, we could dip into reserves.
This is where... This is a fundamental difference about the way I think of it and the way other people think of it, is that I'm not an advocate of taxing now so that we don't have to tax later. If we don't need the money today and we have an acceptable fund balance, then we won't defer taxing the taxpayers for that money until we need it. But that's... We'll have that discussion and vote here in just a minute. All right? Or later, or some other... All right, Robert? Okay, so where are we on our recommendations? So the recommendation is, we did agree to bond the paving management in a tune of 606,500.
Yes.
We have not yet decided what to do with the cash savings from that. Did you make a motion?
No, but I have one more thing to add to that.
Please.
And this goes back to Moira's comments many years ago, which she probably doesn't remember. But, so you do have that savings in the mill rate, right? If you do what Rob's proposing. And it's 500, and it's a .22 mill savings by doing that. The one thing we haven't discussed in the operating budget is the pension investment assumption. We talked about perhaps lowering it to 6.5.
Can I just...
I'd just say that's 5, that's the same amount, 500,000.
I'm gonna cut you off after the fact. Say, we're gonna look at all of those in just a minute and decide whether any of those should be assigned fund balances or adjusted. Because ultimately, we're gonna get around to what the mill rate should be and what the reserve levels should be, and how much of it should be assigned or unassigned.
So I would just say that that may factor into it, what we do with bonded payment, because you will save 500,000 if you increase... If you lower the pension investment, you spend 500,000.
If you're keeping score at home?
Yes.
Right now, we have 546,500 of money we don't know what quite what to do with. Yeah, okay?
Yes.
And that's a plus.
Yes.
Okay, so stay tuned. All right.
Were there any comments about that Board of Selectmen operating budget? Because we went to capital pretty quickly, so I was...
Well, we did. We got...
But we can always go back.
We can't. So let's do that.
We didn't cover it all in the four-hour discussion already?
I presume you have one?
I do, actually. And, you know, again, I look at the drivers, right? And it's salaries, and it's healthcare, and it's Medicare, and Social Security. That's the bulk of it, right? I mean, I don't agree that a contingency is an expenditure driver, really, for unsettled labor contracts. That's just a nuance to the salary budget, right? So it's all related to pretty much contractual salaries and increase in healthcare. The one thing I just did want to mention, because we did talk at length about it, and the Chief of Police was very eloquent in his discussion on overtime. And I appreciate that, but now I... Oh, here it is. Thanks. Thanks for your patience. There was just a miss in the budget last year. I'll preface it by saying there's nothing more important to me in this town and the town budget than the safety for my kids, my family, and the community as I'm driving around town. I just want to say that the two largest budget items are full-time salary and overtime. And if you combine overtime training with overtime, it's all overtime. There was a pretty big miss in the budget between last year and this year. And, you know, the overall change from '19 to '20 is, you know, on overtime is roughly, you know, almost 60% of the increase in full-time. So I would just ask, Adam, just to mention it, do whatever you can to just try and manage that, the overtime line item, to the best of your ability, you know? Whether it's a reallocation to full-time or whether, you know, I'd just rather... I'd rather see it almost in like a full-time or part-time line item than in overtime, than an overtime line item. That's just my personal opinion. It's the biggest increase of your budget on a percentage basis. So that's all.
All right. Any other comments on the operating budget?
Just quickly jump in. One of the pieces that's the most significant driver in police overtime are the shifts that we are required to fill to maintain our minimum staffing requirements that are associated with our various employees' leave, whether that's vacation leave, sick leave, use of comp time. Just covering those shifts due to leave is about $150,000 of the overtime budget. So, you know, when you look at why have we been sort of consistently overspending that $175,000 every year? Again, about 150,000 of that 175 is just for covering shifts for vacations, sick leave, et cetera. So then when you start thinking about adding on, you know, holdovers for calls, investigations...
Yeah, so I just want to make it clear.
Yeah, I just hope that would be helpful to share.
I remember everything that the Chief mentioned at the last meeting, and it's not to be taken at as a criticism at all. It's just, it's more or less, there's...
I would say it just a different way. Let's not have a miss based on this revised, correct budget. In other words, we were under-budgeting for overtime in the past. Isn't that... Wouldn't that be true?
Yeah, I think this will still most likely be under-budgeted.
And so can I just add, though? If you're... If it's... Having worked in a 24-hour shift kind of place, hospitals, you know people are gonna take vacation, and so you have part-timers who can fill in or... I think that's your point, is instead of doing lots of overtime, you know, I don't know if it was less expensive or more, but if you're doing overtime to fill that, you know, could you use a part-time person who you're not gonna pay as much?
Yeah, we do not have part-time police officers.
Or an additional full... Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a different business.
And I don't know if that's an option or not, but I think that's what you were trying to say, was you'd be happier if it was in full-time or part-time.
There are probably union contract restrictions as well.
True.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So anything else as it relates to the actual expenditure line items on the Board of Selectmen budget? Okay. So then the next item... So let's go back to the 12% increase in premiums that was recommended. And I would just say that one of the things we're gonna talk about is the reserve level for the Internal Service Fund when we go to assigning and unassigning fund balances. So I personally am in favor of the 12% as being a good place to be. We were all over the map from nine to start with to 14 experience. I think it's responsible without being too ultra-conservative and yet recognizes the increased cost. That's just my position. All right, so those are in the budget. We don't really need to do anything with them. They're in both budgets unless someone violently disagrees. So I know you gotta...
I don't violently disagree, but I disagree. It's been a five-year history of being underfunded, so...
So are they in the budgets? I thought we had 14 when we went to public hearing.
So 14.8 is what went to public hearing. When the Board of Ed and Board of Selectmen came back with additional suggestions, we had the revised number at that point. So the revised recommended budgets from both boards had the 12%.
And those have been presented to the public, both those revised budgets?
That's what was presented tonight.
Tonight, right.
Technically, the budget is the budget you sent to public hearing. So you have to affirm that we changed it from 14 to 12.
So I have a revenue question. It's something we talked with Amy about that isn't in the Board of Selectmen's recommendations, but that we thought that you could book an additional 150,000 in revenue from investment earnings based on what your track record was. And so I would like to recommend that we do that, and I think Amy was comfortable with that, because it's a little extra help in the budget.
So that's a motion? Make that a motion?
Okay.
Everybody understand what we're suggesting?
Can you do the dollar amount, Linda? Get that from Amy.
Was it 150,000 even, Amy?
We can do that.
That's a good number. All right, so recommend that.
Amy, you're comfortable with that as a reasonable number?
Yeah.
150.
So you wanted to find that. I move that we book an additional 150,000 in revenue from investment.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So that's a positive change.
So if you're keeping score, right?
Yeah, we are keeping score at home. All right, and then we... So no action necessary with the 12%. So now let's talk about all of the... There's four or five things that affect the assigned versus unassigned. So just for the room, there remains an assigned fund balance of a million five for the Hartford property, which we'd put in place three or four years ago. And it's never been released. And it seems now that with all the building going on and everything else that that specific level of assigned fund balance is no longer necessary. Stay tuned. We'll find some uses, potential uses for it coming forward.
And it does exist, right?
We have confirmed that it does. It was never removed, even though we all thought we'd done it, but it never got taken off. So I'm looking for a motion to unassign the million five Hartford property.
I move that we unassign that and make it available for other uses.
Yeah, seconded by Derek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Y'all needed it. I just gave it to you.
All right, so now we got some money to spend. And so we have... And we're gonna run this all through the popcorn machine and see where we end up. Just a minute. But the... Let's go back and talk about the Internal Service Fund. And given the 12% increase mid-range, what we want to do, and I think the recommendation is to put 850,000 into the Internal Service Fund to bolster that fund. Because as you've noted, Derek, we've operated, we've eaten into the fund or used up any fund balance fairly consistently over time.
So I move that we put 775,000 into that fund from the Hartford one, of the 1.45 million, and 85 from the non-lapsing account. And that we make an absolute promise that if you guys have a problem and you need money, you discover you have some issue that comes up over the course of the year, that's what our 15 million dollars reserves are for. We've got your back.
They're gonna brace for you, too.
So that promise, it was made...
Depends on how the elections go. But, I mean, I think, you know, we have to make that commitment, but that's what that 15 million is for, rather than leaving you with your own separate reserve fund as a just-in-case. I don't want to use the wrong word, because I know I could get slapped for saying the S-word. But that will give us some immediate relief, and you may not need it yourself. So you may or may not. You've budgeted hopefully appropriately and have for some years and have had excess at the end of the year, so let's...
All right, so are you making that motion? So does anybody want to second that motion?
One correction.
The math's off, sorry. It would be 765 and 85 to get to 850.
So that's Linda's motion. Anyone want to second that motion? Hearing no second.
Okay, well, so much for that idea.
Yeah. I'm personally fine leaving the 85,000 in the non-lapsing account. I think they've been very... The Board of Ed has been very responsible with that money over the last several years. And if that's their recommendation, I'm okay with it. But I do think we ought to move 850,000 of the unassigned balance into the Internal Revenue Fund or Internal Service Fund. I never get that right.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so moved by Maura. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion? So if the percentage was increased, the dollar amount would go down, correct?
What percentage?
If the percentage went from 12 to 14, instead, we would have to move less to the Internal.
If there was negative experience, negative claims experience against the 12% budgeted item, then the Internal Revenue, Internal Service Fund...
If you use 14 number instead of 12.
Yes, would the eight...
No, I don't think so.
Right, okay. Just thank you.
I mean, that's the amount you need in reserves.
That's enough for my vote. Thank you.
Point of discussion?
Yes.
Last year, when we did this in April, Shawn Kimball recommended we put a million in the insurance reserve. And the net effect of that was reducing the major medical line item by 35,000. Are there any reductions that occur in doing that, or that's already baked into your operating budget?
So this proposal would be just reserve. This 850 would be going for the reserve.
And last time when we put it in just reserves, the net effect was to lower the major medical line.
Under the previous consulting regime, it was suggested that if we had a more robust Internal Service Fund, that we wouldn't have to have quite as high an expense line item for premiums. Isn't that...
Yes.
But what we're saying now is, we've come out the other way. This is the expense line item to maintain the fund. And now we want to bolster the fund, and we'll get no netting against that. We'll just put the 850 in. There'll be no premium savings associated. Is that what you were asking?
That was my question.
So to be clear, if it was 14%, then the dollar amount would be less than we funded. Because the... Because more... Because the employees would be... Or employee employers would be responsible for more of the premium. If it was 14.
Well, the employees pay 20% of the premium. So if we have the budget at 14, then we pay more, 80% of the increase, and the employees pay more, the 20% of the increase. So is that your question?
Now, I guess the basis of my opposition to the motion that's going to be made is that I believe that there should be, for the public's edification, I believe that it should be funded. I believe that there should be a larger share of the premium paid by employer-employees. So I would say that I believe it needs to be funded, but not as much, because I think it should be shared more with the employee.
So without making an actual motion, tell me what you would recommend we do relative to both the expense item, 12, 14?
14.
And the contribution to the Internal Service Fund?
Whatever the effective difference would be.
So, but I don't understand your point. How does going to 14 make it more...
Well, what he's saying is that you don't put in the full 850, the combination.
Right.
But one's an expense and one's a transfer of a fund balance. They're not the same.
Yeah, one is the first and one is the premium.
So the way you...
Yes.
So the way you think about it is, and I think, Derek, let me know if I have it wrong. If you've got a higher reserves, you can have fluctuation in your expenses, right? The portage, right? You got the court. If you have lower reserves, that fluctuation can't be as much. But if you're paying more in premium, you're balancing it out, so you can have a lower reserve number.
Right, so I'm saying it could be 700 or 650 as opposed to the 800.
Right, and I don't know what the number is.
Right, neither do I, but that would be the basis for my opposition.
So the more you pay in premium, the less you put in reserves, generally.
Just go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, all right. I think we're ready to move on.
Oh, okay.
Derek is...
I'm okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
So the motion is 850 from unassigned to the Internal Service Fund as an assigned fund balance. We need a... I make the motion, seconded by...
No, I made it already.
You made it? And it was seconded by...
Nobody. I'll second it.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Derek.
700, 800.
All right, so we've got a couple of other items. So one is...
What do you do with the balance of that?
Well, right now, it's just in the general fund.
Well, are we just allocating how much?
Yeah.
850.
So the next item is the interest rate assumption on the pension plans and discussion about whether we are too high and where we want to go. This discussion has spanned two or three meetings, and we've been around... We're at 7%. I think our target is six and a half. But over how many years and what do we want to use for the 1920 budget? Any comments? Lisa?
So if we go to 6.5, according to Amy, that will cost us about 500,000 in ARC.
I can pull up the schedule if you want. That'd be awesome.
So that would be one, to your point, Rob, if you didn't want to put it into the assigned Small Capital Reserve Fund, you could use that to offset the mill rate increase by decreasing the ARC, or by increasing the ARC.
So just to take you through this quick, this is your 7% number, and this is what the contribution is. This is what's in the budget. So if you wanted to go down to 6875 for the town, this is your contribution. This is what's in the budget, so this is your additional contribution. This is for the town, and then this is the same analysis for the Board of Education. And then there's just a little caveat here that our 7118 valuations are not done yet. We don't have those numbers. So these numbers are based on our July 1, 17 valuations. So these numbers might change slightly once we get our revised valuations. And this is just the pension. And then when you guys want to move on to OPEP, there's another tab for that as well.
Can we see that?
Before you move... Before you move, so then we would combine the two from each of them?
Yes, right, yes.
Right, to be fair.
So when we discussed this before, didn't we talk about the phasing it in?
Yeah, we did. We did.
Not going immediately to 6.5?
Yeah, but the question was, do we take four steps over four years? Do we take, uh, two steps? Do we take, you know, what's, what's the appropriate thing to do? Show us OPEB, just so we can get a sense of the... So if we did, is this, OPEB is combined?
Nope, this is the town, and this is the board.
So why isn't there an impact on the town?
Because on OPEB for the town, our employees pay into that fund, which reduces the town's contribution. So right now, they're paying in enough where the town doesn't have to make a contribution, unless we reduce it to 6.5%.
Okay. So if we took 675 for both, the impact on the, so this is a contribution, this is an expense item for the town, on the town budget? We would add 105,000 on this page, and, can you go back to the pension? Uh, 2...
281, 273.
So it's 386, 386.
386, interesting. Somebody's done them out.
Just saying.
Nobody's making even 6.5 on their investment today. I would recommend a smoothing of at least 25 basis points of the, now, current 7 to 6.75 across the board, pension and OPEB, and allocate unallocated funds to those accounts with the expectation that we will move again, uh, next year. And may, depending on where we are at our tri-board meeting next year, recommend that those are absorbed, uh, maybe, maybe more equally.
So I would just add that, I mean, I agree with everything you just said, but just for the public, it's not like you base your assumption on just what the current picture is. You look at 10 or 20 years of trailing.
Well, the 10-year Treasury is like currently like 2.4 or 5%.
So just to be, to make a crisp motion, you would say that we will make that assumption for the 1920, the six and three-quarters for the 1920, without indicating what, when we might make the next move. But, because all we're really doing is...
Yeah, this year.
Yeah, this year.
Yeah.
But, but continue to state that our target is to be at 6.5 in the long term.
Correct.
Funded by the unassigned?
Pardon me?
Funded by the unassigned?
Uh, yes.
Lisa has a comment about that.
So I would not. I would, that's gonna be a long-term base increase. So I would not use unassigned, because that's a one-time use of it. It will create a hole next year for doing that. It should be, become part of the base operating budget.
How will it become a hole?
Because next year...
We're not suggesting that we're gonna use unassigned next year.
Well, then it'll be part of the operating budget.
Well, right. We're not saying we won't, we're not saying we will.
No, but what I, what I'm saying is that I wouldn't, it's a, we, I guess I have concerns about using a one-time revenue source, which is unassigned for.
No, it's not, that's not the discussion we're having right now. The discussion is what the assumption should be in, for the expense item in the 1920 budget.
So I had heard that using, Maura had suggested using...
Yeah, you're right. Maura had mentioned that. I'm gonna go.
Okay. Well, somebody...
Let's, let's go back to a, just a motion on, back to just a motion on what the interest rate assumption should be, all right?
Without saying...
Right, where the money's gonna come from.
Okay.
So the, so we're recommending, uh, sending the budget back with a 675 expense item. Made by Maura.
Second.
Seconded by Derek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right.
I would go to 65.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, how are we doing on the magic list here?
So we do have to figure out where the money's coming from for this.
Well, we, we have, we have some, yes.
Currently at 1, 3, 4, 6, 5. That's Hartford, the 546, 5.
So now, Amy, on the fly, deal or no deal?
Well, we have a couple of things to resolve before you ask her to do a no rate thing.
Yeah.
And one is, what do you do with the remaining 650 that's in the 1.45?
That is the next question, which begs what the projected fund balance, unassigned fund balance will be based on all of these changes that we've made. That's the way I look at it. I don't, before we start assigning to assigned funds, let's figure out how much total unassigned funds we have.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
So that's a combination of the ones we've freed up here, and what the revised, these revised numbers generate in fund balance. Because that will beg the question, what should our target unassigned fund balance be as a percentage of the 20, 1920 budget? Can you do that?
I can.
Of course you can.
She's amazing.
All right, so since we're gonna mess with this spreadsheet, and I don't wanna make any mistakes, can we just go through your changes one by one?
Yep.
You can all look at them as I do them?
Yep.
And make sure we're all on the same page.
You gotta pay attention now.
Sorry. Get out your, your sheet.
Your scorecard.
Your scorecard.
All right, so the police, we're gonna put... We'll just stick it under vehicles for now. We're gonna put 130 in the operating budget.
You check these off? Who's checking these off?
Yep.
Derek.
Oh, no, what did we just check off?
130. For the police vehicle, but that's a neutral. That doesn't impact the number.
Right, hold on. We're taking it out of the CNR.
So for that to be neutral, you have to let us put 130 back in CNR and take the 130 out for cash somewhere else? Because if it's in CNR, it's on a five-year payback, so it's not neutral, just taking it out of CNR.
Yeah, so you'll have to put in one of the extra cash for capitals in the CNR.
Right. Okay.
So you have to tell us what 130 you want in there. We can't do it, you have to.
And then under the capital, we are going to take our 546,500 savings for bonding. And then under our investment income...
So you're adding 150,000?
Yes.
Yep, we're adding the 150,000.
Did you say you did the pavement already?
I did. And then that's nothing. And then we're taking the health insurance reserve. And then we're adding in our pension assumptions.
What's this now?
The pension.
The pension to the 675.
675.
So for the town, that was 172 to 11, and for the Board of Ed, that's 214, 698. So with these assumptions, that's our mill rate.
And you did the pavement.
I did the pavement, yeah. So that's our mill rate, and then this is our, okay, so this is our unassigned fund balance at a 98.5% collection rate.
98.5.
I mean, the mill rate, does that include fire or no?
No.
No.
Fire is 1.19 this year?
Yes.
1.17?
No.
In the current year is 1.17?
In the current year, but projected, it's 1.19.
But the, but the 850, yeah, so I thought the unassigned fund balance last time was 15 million. Did the 850,000 come out of unassigned, because it was in an assigned fund?
What, when was it 15?
That total unassigned fund balance, which is at 13.83% or...
Well, it was, uh...
13 million. You see that one? I thought last time we looked at a worksheet, it was like 15% of 15 million.
We can look.
So how come it got so much smaller?
I think that was a combination of assigned and unassigned.
Did that include, did that include the 1.5?
There was, yeah.
Is that why?
Yeah, hold on.
Because it's labeled unassigned, and the 1.5 was in the assigned.
Where'd the 1.5 go? It's, it's now in the unassigned?
Unassigned.
But if it wasn't in...
Let's see where we were. This was from, so you can open one.
Hold on. See if this gives it to me. So that's with the 605, taking out the 605, we're about 14.6. And then I had included the 99.5% collection rate, which gets you to your 15.
So that's the difference. So the, there's 500,000, or this, the way we used to do this, we'd add half a million dollars of, you know, over collection from the assumption.
Right.
The way Amy does it is use 99.5.
Right, so per your request, I broke it out, so now this shows at the 98.5% collection rate, and then this shows at the 99.5% collection rate.
There's the 15. So what's this column over here?
This includes the 99.5% collection rate.
Okay, so that's, those are the, those are the numbers we got.
So we should...
Yeah.
Where did that money go?
All right, now, hold on, I'm gonna go back to the other one so that we don't lose it.
Yeah, so now you're gonna go back to the one you just did and show us the right hand, so it's 1466.
So that, so that...
I'm just trying to get my head around why that went down.
Right, because it's the 850, which we thought was in an assigned account, that the 15% was, you know, unassigned, and somehow the 850 is...
Does that look right to you? Does that feel right, Amy, to you, that it would go down like that? Let's think about what we did.
If the 1.5 was in some separate account, why is it hitting the reserved?
That's a good question.
So like 300,000?
386, 909.
We also subtracted from it, though, too.
We added here. This was an add. So that's an add.
Yeah, but that doesn't affect it. Yeah, I moved it out of, yeah, because of their motion.
Okay. So let's go back to the expense budget, first of all. Let's go back, what's, what's the increase in the combined expense budget? We were at 4.26. With all of the ins and outs, what happened to the expense budgets from where we were before we made these changes?
So 4.26, and now it's at 3.08.
Why doesn't the fund balance go up?
Right.
Instead of down?
Right.
Because your expenditure base is going up.
Because the what?
It's a higher divisor. The expenditure base goes up 3 million bucks.
Yeah, but even looking at the fund balance, the reserves, in the dollar, not the percent.
Yeah, the divisor is the total budget. What was the total budget before? Total expense budget before was 100 million.
Well, we took it at the dollar. He actually added money to the, saved money in the expenditures, like bonding, pavement.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So the gross expenditures are 100 now, 100 million, 470,000? What was that number before?
10630, 412.
Only 200,000, or down, went down 200,000, right?
Expenditure.
Expenditure.
Or you're now using 850 instead of 606?
So that's, so, yeah.
Pension's gonna cost you more.
And, yeah.
It's almost a million bucks between expenditures being higher, no, they're lower, but they're on, about even.
I mean, does the, putting the money in the Internal Service Fund, that's an expenditure in the line transfer? Is that in the operating budget through transfers?
That's where it is. That's where the money is. Where did that 850 go?
Oh.
Huh?
Wait, hold on.
It's in an unassigned, it's in an assigned fund balance. Did it get put in?
So that has to be shown in the operating as a expenditure, right?
Expenditure.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yes, you're right.
There you go. My goodness.
Okay. All right, so without, I, I, my strong sense here is that we need to take a deep breath and run, you know, look at all of these again and talk about it, but I would like to at least do a dry-run mill rate calc based on that number.
And can we talk about what we're gonna do with the unassigned 650,000?
Actually, we need to reduce this 385, or at least 300,000 for the Board of Ed using their non-lapsing.
Is the Internal Service Fund part of the unassigned fund balance?
Assigned, right?
It was assigned. You guys voted to move it to unassigned.
But then we, we put it in the Internal Service Fund, isn't then now assigned?
Yeah, it's assigned based on the fund.
Yeah.
But that fund isn't, is that a separate fund?
That's fund, it's not this, yeah.
That's a separate fund.
Yeah.
It's not on this balance sheet.
But it's still an expenditure as a transfer, right, in the operating budget?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so that's, that's where the 850,000 went.
Got it, got it.
It's not in here anymore. That's why that's down. All right, so before we talk about the other 650, the way you said, is 1455 as an unassigned fund balance, an appropriate level of reserves?
Well, that's based on the assumption for everyone that we collect 99.5% of our...
Correct.
Okay, so what I'd like to, can you change that to 90, just for my own comfort? Uh, 99%, just so I can see.
The impact on the mill rate?
Yeah. No, no, on the collection, that we collect 99% as opposed to 98.5%.
Leave the mill rate the same.
I'm sorry, 99.
What do you wanna see, the impact of fund balance or the mill rate?
I wanna see on the fund balance. I'm more, I'm concerned with the overall.
So then if it's the fund balance, then this is your number? Because the 99% gives you this extra 843,000.
That's 99.5, isn't it?
That's 99.5.
Yeah, can you change it to, can you change it to 99?
Oh, you just wanna flat 99?
I want 50, yeah, I just wanna see how much 50 basis points moves to the, you know...
Cut the 843.5.
Because their collection rate may be lower this year because of the steep...
Well, for whatever reason, it's just, it's a very aggressive assumption. It's based on...
It's still below our...
Yeah, okay, so it's...
But there's no, there's no, there's no room in it. We've always done it with a little bit of room.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it's about that half a percent.
It's almost 14.
That makes sense, right, because it's a 100 million dollar budget, right?
Right.
So my position would be, to answer your earlier question, then, is that we don't need to do anything with the other money in terms of assigning it somewhere.
And so, Amy and I talked about this, and it never quite sank into me, because my head hurt in the same way that his hurts. But if, if what I'm hearing Maria say is that we had deferred maintenance on a lot of things, and that we need to catch up on a bunch of small capital items, that if we used this one-time money, the 650, if we used that one-time money, it would help you catch up on a bunch of...
Yes.
Capital things, and without creating a cliff in future budgets, because... And without creating a cliff in future budgets, because it's just a one-time catch-up.
That's right.
So you're using one-time money for a one-time catch-up, which puts you in a better position going forward for future years, in not having a big capital crunch.
Could give you more room.
In out-years, in the out-years, yeah.
Yeah. And I'm not talking necessarily for the big capital, but also for the small capital. Or more importantly, the small capital, because that's what you made the point about. So I maybe would turf this to you to go back, because I don't think we're gonna push this forward tonight. So you have a little time to think about, you know, is there an appropriate way to use that 650 to buy yourself a catch-up? Because that was the big concern, was that we had deferred maintenance. So let's undeffer it, catch up and get on an even footing. And then expect lower budgets going forward, because you won't have that, that catch-up problem.
Well, we, we do sort of have two, two issues, right? We've got the catch-up problem, but then we also have, again, we've been working on all of our studies to determine what our baseline routine needs are. I do think our baseline routine needs are probably going to be at least 2.5 million. You know, ideally, in the long run, again, as we're, we're starting to see the studies come in with the dollars, you know, if we're going to say use 7%, you know, debt service, cash for capital, 7%, you know, in the long run, if we were funding our baseline capital needs, it's probably more of a balance would be, say, debt service is about 4 to 4.25% of our overall, you know, budget, and, and having cash for our baseline needs is probably more in line of like 2 and 3/4 to 3%. So that's kind of, again, just very preliminary, because we're still completing our studies, but in the long term, I think that's probably a more healthy mix to fund, you know, projects that have a much longer useful life versus sort of the smaller capital needs, and those smaller kind of routine needs, again, I think it's probably more in like the 2 and 3/4 to 3% range of, of the budget. But we do have catch-up, we do have a lot of items, yes, that have been deferred for a long time, so we sort of have two problems there.
So, thank you, Linda, that was, I guess I didn't say it artfully enough, but that's what I had proposed earlier. And we would put it in the fund that already exists as a capital reserve, and that's where Rob and Derek had concerns, why not just leave it in the general fund? I do want to mention that baseline capital, if we, having moved the plow truck and P D, is at 2.3 million, and Maria thinks it should be 2.5 to 2.7. So just by making those two moves, we've come much closer to her baseline need than we were when I was first selectman, by quite a bit. So the, by 310,000 a year. So that will help you get there, if you keep bonding and pavement. And then you can do the catch-up with the 600, if you want to buy it all in one year, we could do that this year, or you could put in the reserves and use it over the next five years. As to what Sean said, use it all in one year or use it over five years, it's up to you.
So just to be clear, if we, if we put 650,000, we take it out of unassigned and put it into the capital reserve fund?
Or some portion.
And there would be no impact on the mill rate?
Uh, there was... You need to add the unassigned.
And, and I would think there would potentially be a positive impact on the mill rate, because some of the, some of the small catch-up items that are in this year's budget in excess of what's in the C N R funding, are what's hitting your operating budget. So it could offset some of that, no?
Uh, for next year, next year. Sorry, 2022.
You have enough cash.
Yes. But it would impact the mill rate, because we would be taking out of assigned, we'd be using part of the 1.5, right, to bank it. Is that what you're proposing, Linda, or one am I missing?
I don't know what I'm missing at this point.
I thought you were saying use part of the HIG, the Hartford Insurance Company's 1.5, and putting it in aside to use for capital.
I'm just gonna edit that to say, there is no more Hartford Insurance.
It's not out.
It's gone. It's in, it's in unassigned.
You voted to unassign it.
What we're saying now is a separate motion to move 650,000 from the unassigned fund balance into the capital reserve fund.
Correct.
And that would impact the mill rate, correct, or no?
No.
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 It's just an in and out?
I think that's too big a number. I would, I would recommend Mick splitting.
Well, I'm, I'm going with the, uh, it's all at our discretion anyway. We get a say-in before it gets spent.
Well, and if I can just interject, we don't have to make this decision tonight. We could let them come back with a proposal of what makes most sense to you, given some time to think about it.
Capital Reserve would be, I mean, Capital Reserve would be a fine place to, to make the transfer, it just, how much would, would be a, you know, policy decision you would need to make.
But I guess, what I'm asking is, if you can give us a sense of, what is the number associated with this, hey, we've had deferred maintenance, we need to catch up? What's that number?
Sure, so if you go to your budget tab on the C N R, funded there.
But is it everything that's in there? Everything is catch-up?
For the next six years. Not, not everything, some of that is just routine, but again, there's, there's six years.
What's the, what's the one-time catch-up cost versus routine?
It's gonna take more than a week to figure that out.
Yeah. Agreed, agreed.
School vacation, it's not gonna happen in a week.
Agreed.
So where are we on this motion? This specific motion? It's made by Mora?
Yes.
To move 650 from an unassigned into the capital reserve fund? Is there a second?
Once we get to discussion.
We don't have an active motion yet.
Well, so do we wanna, I mean, to Derek's point, be a little more conservative, and number one, we, again, don't have to do it tonight.
Yeah.
But secondly, we could move a portion of it and keep the other portion as a contingency in case the state, you know, per representative...
Well, so let's, let's...
To that end, I'll just make a comment. I, I, for whatever reason, focus on a consistent, on an unallocated reserve. Because that's the basis for which Moody's and all the rating agencies looks at our ability to borrow. And I feel as though if we're more consistent with, let's say, somewhere between a 14 and a 14 and a half percent reserve, unallocated reserve, for me, that feels good. So if at 98.5%, we're at 13.71, and we can allocate some of that, maybe it's a split, maybe it's a little bit more in the capital reserve, however you want to do it, I would just like to see that 13,71 to like over a 14. And then if that, if, if it's 250, or maybe it's a little bit more, you know, let's make that happen.
Okay, so I'm trying to keep this on track. We have a motion without a second. And so...
I'd like to withdraw the motion?
Withdrawn.
Okay. Because there's one other item that we need to consider, which is back to the teacher's $300,000 that is still in this budget?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
So...
Oh, okay, that's right, I forgot that.
So...
So we already have a built-in safety.
I would say, my personal view is, we should leave the 300,000 in this budget. We may want to say contingency for state adjustments, or, you know, whatever you want to call it. It's because of what we know about that particular line item, but I think it would be not as responsible as we should be to take it out and not replace it. So, is everybody on that page?
Yes.
Okay, so leave that in, I don't think we really need a motion to that, other than to just call it something different. All right. So having said that, here's where I think we are for tonight. Unless anybody has anything else, but we've got a couple more agenda items, but I, I think that we made a lot of moves tonight, very positively, we addressed them, we talked about them, but I'd really like to double-check all of the numbers and then it all flows through. We can't, we can't screw this up when we send it to the town, we want it to be precise. So what I would recap is that we really do not need any action, I do, I do not believe we need any action from the Board of Ed on their budget. We are in a position where we will forward their budget as is. All right?
Agreed.
Hallelujah.
Thank you.
We need the Board of Selectmen to approve the changes that we made tonight?
No.
After we...
After we approve it?
No.
So do you have the...
Oh, got it, got it. I always forget that, okay. Have we clarified everything on, we have the authority on the capital budget also then, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we've made a lot of important decisions, but we haven't made the final decisions on those two budgets before we recommend them. So what I would ask is that we, and if we don't make a decision to refer this to referendum tonight, we need another Board of Finance meeting and a public hearing?
And they're both tentatively scheduled.
Yes, April 23rd, correct?
April 23rd would be the hearing.
So I think that would be the right time to go ahead and have that meeting? Is that an acceptable schedule for everybody? Does everybody know this? What's that?
The 16th would be the Board of Finance meeting.
We don't, we don't have an April 16th, it's April 23rd is a Board of Finance meeting slash public hearing.
We do both on one night. There's no reason not.
Yeah, they're scheduled, it's, it's scheduled as a regular meeting for you.
So we won't have a meeting on the 15th?
Correct.
16th.
Well, I have that in my calendar, is that I have it in my...
I'll double check, no, I think it's the 23rd. It's the 23rd.
All right. We will confirm by invite, but we'll, we'll plan on doing it on April 23rd. So just for my edification, that we would have the public hearing first, and then the Board of Finance meeting to make the record, the final decision to refer.
Does that work, though? Because don't we need to forward our final budget of yours to the hearing, and they have to hear?
No, the hearing's still open.
Yeah, we can continue the hearing.
So we can make changes afterwards.
Continuation of the hearing will be at the, will be at the beginning. To get, be sure we do this all right, but that, I think that's the way we did it before. We'll have, we'll open the meeting with a public hearing continuation of this, then we will formally close the public hearing. We will further discuss anything we want, and then approve the budgets and approve referring them to the referendum, which then will be held on
May 14th?
May 14th. I think that's fine.
Just a question for clarification, is, can you find out from our auditor whether putting the 650 in the capital reserve impacts the Moody's rating, or when we go out to bond, our bond council at all? I just want to understand if that's an impact or a non.
You're never gonna know what's gonna affect the Moody's rating.
Well, they actually will tell you.
They do generally look at...
You can call them and ask.
Yeah, I mean, they do generally look at your overall reserves in all funds, but, but we could ask the question.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's still a good number.
I do, too. I would just invite, if not require, but invite the staff of the Board of Selectmen, if you've got recommendations about that 650. We're, I'm happy to hear them.
Yeah, I think we're still, we're open to doing that the right way, I think that's...
I'd like to see it in some way, close that capital.
So just to be clear, you want us to look at the out-years and accelerate the spending?
Well, I was hoping that it could be used to reduce the operating budget.
It doesn't. It reduces future operating budgets.
If there's a way to do that, you might be creative.
So you've, you've signaled to us tonight that you're okay with the rest of our capital expenditures?
I was, I was gonna be, yeah.
Because they fit within the confines.
Yeah. I think the, the, I thought we already talked, touched on this, but I think that the capital items for both the Board of Ed and the town that are, need to be approved for the 20, 19, 20 budget year are acceptable to us.
There was a question that arose, and you were gonna get it back to us, but you can get back to us later about the sweeper.
Oh, and that's GAAP fiscal 2024, I believe. Right, that would be a replacement sweeper, we have three sweepers, that would be replacing one of our three sweepers.
That's not before you...
But that's 2024, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, we're not looking at current capital, or you're gonna either move the 605?
Well, it was an implication that we were, we had some catching up to do.
There is.
Huh?
There is, because we've put off expenditures over, over years, but I mean, the, the plan that was put together as a thoughtful six-year plan, again, that, that addresses all of our capital needs in the future, and we can try to cobble a meeting together in the next week and a half with the school vacation, and no one's in town.
Well, so I'm, now, I was really ready to get on and done, but now I'm confused, because it sounds like you want to spend the 650,000 next year.
No.
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 We have no idea, at this point, what we would spend it on.
So then I don't think any action is necessary
No.
by the Board of Selectmen relative to your list of priorities, because between now and when we meet again, we don't expect that to be any different than it is today.
Correct. And when we ultimately decide what to do, your board blesses it before it goes anywhere.
All right. So I think that, that part's good, right? So everybody has their marching orders for between now and April 23rd. All right?
Just for Karen Cortez's piece of mind, when would the referendum be?
May 14th.
May 14th.
Can I text her that?
Yeah, I told her I would let her...
We'll send out invites for, let's send out updated invitations for the meetings that will line up with that. Melissa or somebody give us a time, you know, that, somebody prepare the options. Send this to our whole board, everybody, really, so that they know when we have to publish, when, you know, all of the things we have to do. Okay? The timeline?
Yep.
All right? As, as option?
Two.
Two.
Option two.
Okay.
If you could just make a motion to extend the public hearing to the 23rd, just to be safe.
Thank you very much.
I'll move that, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. There are just a couple more items on our agenda for the Board of Finance, and then we'll be done. We have an outline item for the Henry James Middle School project. This was a question that was raised by one of our board members, as it was asked at a meeting relative to regionalization and where we were, we did go to Bond Council and Town Council, and we determined that the authority to make any changes to the Henry James project are solely with the Board of Ed. That includes the bonding, and we just wanted, Kevin Prell had asked this, and he wanted to be sure that it just showed on the record that we had asked the question relative to that, and reported back, and that there's no action that we can or should, or even suggesting we would do. All right? Any questions about that? All right. Proposed fund balance transfer?
You already took care of it.
Thank you. Perfect. And then approval of the minutes, Karen has always did a great job, I thought they were... Anybody have any questions?
I move we approve the minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And finally?
I move we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone.